I'd like to call this meeting back to order. And if everyone would please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Madam President, I wonder if this might be an appropriate time, but this being
September 11th.
... anniversary of a pretty significant national tragedy, I wonder if we could in some way pay our respects to the event and to the loss of all those lives.
You have anticipated me, Dr. Noel, for you have anticipated my comments in remembrance of those who lost their lives in New York, Washington DC, and Pennsylvania. A few moments of silence. We are, we have Spanish translation available this evening.
Si, buenas tardes y bienvenidos de parte de la junta directiva del distrito escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesite la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias.
Thank you, Vivian. And then we have headsets for the hearing impaired as indicated on the slide. There is no business to announce from closed session. Acceptance of donations. Is there a motion?
Move to approve with gratitude.
Thank you. So Cordero and Malacca, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So it passes unanimously. Gifts accepted with gratitude. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
Well, we do have a presentation today. With us this evening is Galita Valley Junior High School Principal Veronica Rogers and students from her school to tell us about the Kids Speaking Up Project, which started at Galita Valley Junior High. Veronica, would you please take the mic at the podium?
Right here. Right on the steps, like it was your stage.
Thank you for inviting us here tonight. We're very excited to be here and we're representing actually a few schools. We started at actually elementary school with, right Isabel? No? We actually started at Galita Valley. And we spread when Isabel was here at Galita Valley, and she's now at Dos Pueblos. We've continued on, so we are three years running about hearing kids' voices, and they truly are remarkable. And it's really important to hear what they have to say. We have them actually speak at some of our assemblies and spread the message throughout our school culture. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Ms. Isabel Darcy.
Can I pull this out?
Thank you. We're all members of a group called Kids Speaking Up. I'm Isabel Darcy.
Sophie Darcy.
Emma Stein-Kellner.
Kaitlin Holbrook.
And Katie Furon.
Kids Speaking Up is a nonpartisan group dedicated to combating ignorance and apathy in young people. We educate ourselves about social, national, and global issues. We do community service together. Currently, there are Kids Speaking Up chapters at Galita Valley Junior High School, where we started in 2004, and at Dos Pueblos High School. This past year, we were recognized by the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors.
We are aware that there are serious and daunting problems in the world today. It can seem overwhelming, so we decided to publish an annual magazine of our writings so that kids could have a voice about issues that are important to them. This is the third edition of our magazine, and in it are writings and artwork by Santa Barbara and Galita kids from seven different schools, as well as interviews with Congresswoman Lois Capps and First Lady of Montana Nancy Schweitzer.
We have copies of our magazines for interested students and teachers. Students are welcome to submit poetry, artwork, articles, and essays to our next issue of our magazine, which will be published in spring 2008. Our last issue won six awards given by the California Press Women. You are welcome to take copies of our magazine for each of your schools.
Our next, our next magazine will focus on reasons for hope for our global future and will be working towards solutions. Along with the kids' artwork and writings, the upcoming issue will feature an interview with Governor John Badoch of Maine and how he works his vision for his state, how he educates that vision, and how he deals with the objects of his encounters.
We would like to welcome your schools and their students to participate in Kids Speaking Up, whether it's the students participating in the magazine or starting new chapters at their own schools. For as Margaret Mead once said, "Never doubt that a small community group of thoughtful citizens can change the world; indeed, is the only thing that ever has." Do you have any questions for us?
I don't know if board members have any questions for you. I'd like to say something to you that I want to compliment you for, for two reasons. Number one, that you not only identify problems, but that you work towards solutions. And I think that that's a really positive thing to do. And number two, I think that you are, sound like you're becoming a sustainable program. You're on your third year, you're spreading to other schools, and I think that that's really noteworthy. So often efforts get off the ground and then kind of sputter. So bravo to you for, for really keeping it going.
Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind, we wanted to read one poem from the second issue of the magazine.
Please do.
It's called "A Choice" by Ben Reederstorf. One person complains, the other acts.
One person gets angry, the other protests.
One person becomes bitter, the other is empowered.
One person says it's hopeless, the other votes.
One person is depressed. The other changes the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening.
I have to say that I'm, any junior high school curriculum that gets people where they're quoting Margaret Mead is, gets a big score for me.
Thank you for coming. And Ms. Rogers, if you would remind your students, and actually one's a DP student, that on Saturday at 5:00, Channel 18, they can see their, themselves, they can see their presentation. Okay? Set that DVR. Thank you so much.
Very good. That's it for presentations today. Shall I go on with the superintendent's report? I have a rather brief report tonight. Yesterday, we completed Day 10 for all schools. It started on August 27. Based on the current enrollment count, our declining enrollment trend appears to be continuing at about the same rate. The numbers will not be officially counted until October. Last year, our non-charter elementary schools saw a 3% enrollment decline, and our secondary district enrollment declined by 2%. My office regularly issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. This is a collection of reports and articles on school and district matters. A copy is on display in the reception area near the front door, or it can be provided through the superintendent's office. I'd like to highlight three items in our last board brief from August 31st. First, there is a list of foundations and other nonprofit organizations that engage in fundraising on behalf of the district's schools. The list includes 10 foundations. How about that? That's pretty unusual for a school district to have 10 foundations in the district representing various schools and one foundation, one of those foundations is the Santa Barbara Education Foundation that fundraises for the district. The board requested the list during the second reading of Board Policy 1260. I'm sure you'll remember that one on educational foundations, which will be coming back for adoption at our next board meeting. Second, I'd like to call the board's attention to a list of junior high and high school electives. We will be discussing that list at our next meeting, September 25th. And finally, refunding the general obligation bonds earned the elementary district over $900,000 and the secondary district over $1,900,000. We are still awaiting an opinion from the Attorney General on the advisability of using those funds for bond projects. Back-to-school nights are underway. I saw board members at a number of our back-to-school nights this last week. We have more coming, and we have a list of back-to-school nights on the side table for all those who are interested. As part of our wellness policy, we are evaluating the nutritional quality of our breakfast and lunch programs. We'll be working this year with experts provided by the Orphelia Foundation to conduct a needs assessment, school by school, cafeteria by cafeteria, student body by student body, parents and teachers, and other staff at the school. So we'll be looking at providing highly nutritious meals and affecting the choices of children and the choices that parents make about what they eat. The choices parents make about what children eat. How's that? Speaking of our lunch program, we've resumed, we've resumed posting the elementary district menu online and look forward to building the nutrition services section of our website. On Saturday for upcoming events, I've already told you about back-to-school nights, we will have once again the Cottage Hospital Baby Pair on this Saturday. Child development principals, assistant principals, and other administrators will be staffing the booth this year and talking to families about our schools and programs. And that ends tonight's superintendent's report.
Thank you. I think we're on to public comment.
First up is Jasmine Parvin, followed by Amelia Azeline Castellano Marshall, followed by Carolina Savannah Chavez.
I'm going to ask public speakers to step up to the podium. You have three minutes, and you will get a 30-second warning.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Parvin, and I am the junior class secretary at San Marcos High School. I wanted to formally invite Dr. Chavez and Mr. Turnbull and the school board members to an event that my cabinet and I have worked really hard to put together. As you may know, this is the 50th year anniversary of San Marcos High. Therefore, we have invited back the past 49 queens to the homecoming rally, luncheon, carnival, and the homecoming halftime show. As of right now, 30 of the past queens have confirmed that they will be participating, including the very first queen, Lucy Blen Sexton. We are pleased with the response, and we are all very excited. On Friday, September 28th, we would like to invite you to the homecoming luncheon. We would love to invite everyone, but unfortunately, our budget is tight this year. But everyone is welcome to come to the homecoming carnival, as well as the game, where there'll be music, food, jumpers for the kids, and all of our clubs will be represented. So thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you so much, and I think everyone should have received an invitation already. Thank you so much.
So next up is Amelia Azeline Castellano Marshall.
Hi, my name is Amelia Azeline Castellanos Marshall. I go to Washington School, and I used to go to Washington School, and now I'm going to Roosevelt. I, I went to, I went, I went to Washington School in kindergarten and was there, I was there for kindergarten only, and then I went back in fourth grade. And when I was in fourth grade, I saw all the sixth graders doing flower babies in science camp and science fair and the board games and mummifying chickens and mummy masks and much, much more, taking field trips and all that stuff. And I couldn't wait to get to sixth grade. And then in fifth grade, me and all my friends were so excited that we only had one more year left just to do all those fun things. And then I get a letter in the mail over the summer saying that I wasn't gonna be able to go back to Washington, and I cried a lot, and I just couldn't believe it. And it was because I was tardy a lot and like 17 times. And I'm willing to pick up trash 17 to 30 days, every recess and every lunch, to make up for my time. And I just hope you guys will give me another chance, because I really want to be with my friends and be, and do all those fun things in sixth grade. Thank you.
Thank you, Amelia.
And I have done, I did a petition. I tried to get 120, but I managed to get 111.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amelia.
That's very hard to come here and speak like that. Thank you for coming here.
Hello, my name's Carolina. I'm Amelia's best friend. I met her in fourth grade, the first day of school. We were hanging out like till the end of the day, and we've been through a lot. She's been for me there every single day, and we all want her to really come back, especially for me, because we've been through a lot together, and she's like, like my sister. So it's really hard for me right now, because she's like, she's like one of my best friends, and I have like barely any friends right now, because most of my friends are getting really mad at me, but I really want her to come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Carolina.
Ada, Adella, excuse me, Adella Castellanos, followed by Keith Marshall.
Hello, I'm Adella Castellanos. I'm Amelia's mom, and I did write a letter to Brian, and I gave a letter to Robin as well. I take full responsibility for my daughter's tardiness, and we have spoken about trying to be on time. It's hard as a single parent sometimes to be able to get there on time, but I take full responsibility, and I'm willing to do community service or whatever it takes. I've always volunteered at Amelia's schools throughout her school years, and I was just kind of disheartened when I wasn't able to get a meeting with either one of you, Brian or, or Robin. I did speak with Teresa, your secretary, and I must say that she was very sweet in handling the way she did, but I felt otherwise, I never got a response from either one of you. And I was hoping that I could at least get a one-on-one meeting, but this is probably the best forum I could ask for. And I think you see my daughter, if anything, this has been a really good experience for her, to come up here and have the strength to speak in front of you. I'm super proud. So of course, as a parent, I want my daughter to be happy. I want her to flourish, and I know her education is everything, and I am going to ensure that that's going to happen if you guys grant this for her. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Keith Marshall, followed by Linda Williams.
Hello, my name is Keith Marshall, and Amelia Marshall is my daughter. I've lived in Santa Barbara for 30 years. I've worked in the school systems. I've done a lot of things in the community. You didn't have my attention before, but you have it now, bars being a part of the school board and finding out what's going on in the communities and how the schools actually work. You know, I get a phone call from 11-year-old daughter who's hysterical. I, me and Amelia and her mom are divorced, but we still try to be co-parenting, and we try to like have cohesiveness to work together to make sure Amelia gets a fine education. Amelia likes going to her school. I understand there were some things that are happening that I wasn't aware of, but like I said, you have my attention now. I, I have lunch with Amelia every Thursday since, since she's been going to school. I think I missed four times since I've been having lunch with her. I go to Washington School every Thursday. Teachers see me, principals see me, everybody see me. No one ever mentioned anything that there was a problem going on with me now with, with Amelia. So I just felt like I was there enough to where I should have been at least, you know, notified or something brought to my attention, because you know, I try to let her mom run the, run, run a certain part of her life, and I try to do my part, you know, and so it's a difficult situation. But you know, we have a little girl here that the best interest is, is for her education. And I just feel that in Santa Barbara, that this is really, really important for a young girl who's, who's going into junior high school, has built relationships with people, and have a tendency to, to, to look forward to things. And I think that right now, we shouldn't hang our hat on the negative part. We should try to find a solution to give my daughter an opportunity to continue her education, so this doesn't become something that defines her. You know, and I've already shared with Amelia that, hey, you might not get back in, but hey, this is something that's going to help you be a better person down the line. We're only asking that we give an opportunity. It's not Amelia's fault here. We're punishing the wrong person. So as, as school board members, if you have children, I, Annette's been knowing me for 30 years, since I was a kid. So you know, this is really, really something that I think we can find a way to come up with a solution, that we don't stifle the little girl's growth and the involvement that she's developed with relationships with other kids. And so I just appeal to you that you give that as an opportunity, to give us an opportunity to check, to rectify this and give Amelia the chance to continually grow and keep her relationships. So six years from now, when you see her walking across the podium at the high school, you say, "That's a kid that we gave a second chance to, not a kid that we denied the opportunity to excel in, in what she wanted to do." Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Williams, followed by Rose Castellanos.
Hi, I'm Linda Williams, and I am Amelia's stepmother. I think my husband spoke very well as to how we feel about the issue. The wrong person is suffering unfortunately from this situation. It would be great if you would grant her request to go back to Washington, so she can graduate the sixth grade with the rest of her friends.
Followed by Roberta Reyna.
Hi, my name is Rose Castellanos. I'm Amelia's cousin, and I just want to say that she's been looking forward to this year at Washington for so long, since the beginning of her fourth grade, for the beginning of her first year at Washington. She's been having all these little flower babies. She's been buying the little clothes for the flower babies, making the little money for the science projects and for the little projects that they're having. She's been getting everything together, and she got this letter, and I was at her house, and I, like, I just felt so bad for her, because she's just getting ready for this year, and everything was just nothing, 'cause like she tried so hard, but I guess it was just worth nothing, 'cause she's not going to go there anymore. So I just think that she should go there, because she deserves it, and she's tried very hard, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Roberta Reyna. Followed by Lane Wheeler.
Hello, I'm a little nervous. I was pregnant the same time that Adella was pregnant with Amelia, and so I met Adella. I've known Keith for a very long time, longer than Adella. And my son's father, who's a teacher at Santa Barbara High School, I spoke with him about this this evening, and he said, "Yeah, they're really cracking down on that." And our son goes to Peabody, and he gets up in the morning, sets his alarm, and he wakes me up in the morning, he's so excited, he's in sixth grade, and he's, he excels at what he does, and, and him and Amelia are very good friends, and Amelia has promised that she, I believe I will see that same thing in her that I see in my son every morning. She's going to be excited, she's going to want to achieve her academic goals, and giving her a second chance is, is a humane thing to do, and it's a, it's a wonderful thing to do, because she's going to learn from her mistakes, and she won't be traumatized or affected negatively. She'll be grateful, she'll be happy and joyous to go to school, and I think all kids should be that way. And she's a wonderful child, and I believe that she really deserves a second chance, and I don't think she'll disappoint anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Lane Wheeler, followed by Frank Anderson.
It's nice to come before the board and have a celebration, and I want to call your attention to the fact that Lacumbra Junior High School, and the fabulous teachers and staff there, have managed to do something that I believe is truly remarkable, astounding, and should be celebrated in a public venue such as our board meeting. They raised their scores 47% and made their AYP, which I read in this document that I got from Joanne, that it's only one of 50 schools in the state at year four to accomplish that goal. And I think it's due in large part to the group that I'm fortunate enough to represent in Santa Barbara Teachers, as the president of Santa Barbara Teachers Association. So I would just like to call publicly and to you to acknowledge and thank the great teachers and the wonderful students and faculty of Lacumbra Junior High School for this, what I believe is a really outstanding and commendable achievement. And I think we should all take a chance, a second to smile and thank them for the great job that they've done, and especially the teachers there that have driven the vehicle that has caused this to happen. So once again, a real great opportunity to celebrate Lacumbra's great accomplishment. So I would like to thank you for the opportunity, and thank the great teachers and the students and the faculty and parents at Lacumbra for the great job that they've done. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Wheeler. And I, and I think we have a couple of Lacumbra teachers in the audience with their "We Did It!" t-shirts on, so stand up and let's get the camera on you. Okay?
I think we should all thank Mr. Wheeler, because there's no, there's no agenda item that lets us say what, what you said, and the t-shirts were a great reminder, but you filled in the gap that we can't, we can't talk about. Late, late tonight, we'll talk about board comments, and we'll be able to say those things.
Thank you.
That's all.
Okay. Then we are on to our consent agenda.
I'm sorry, Ms. Harder?
Yeah.
I would just like to comment to the Marshall family, just because I don't want the family or the public to think that we are ignoring your comments. In public comment time, we are not really in a position to respond to you. We typically don't respond to public comments, and because it's not an agenda item, we certainly are not in a position to take any action. But I just want to assure you that we've heard what you have to say, and we really appreciate you, the, the effort that it took for you to be here, and especially to the young people who spoke today. I think a few of my colleagues have already commented, but it certainly is, it takes a great deal of strength and courage to speak out in public like this, so we definitely appreciate this. And Amelia, I just want to comment to you that I think you have already defined yourself by the poise and the maturity that you had, that you displayed here tonight in terms of making this presentation.
So now we are on to our consent agenda. Okay.
May I point out a correction that you have on Item D2? It just has information that was missing on locations of the travel and conferences.
Is there a motion to approve perhaps?
I'd like, I'd like to pull D7. And I'll, I'll move to approve all the other, oh.
D4.
Sorry? Is there a motion? Can I make a motion?
I move to approve the other consent agenda items. I'd like to just note a retirement of, we have two. Sheila Barthel, who is a site coordinating food services, retiring after 26 years with the district. years with the district, and Teresa Tripp, after, retiring after six years. Both from DP.
I'll second that.
So we have motion from Malikoff, second from Parker. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exceptions of item D four and D seven, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I'm assuming it passes unanimously. There were some quiet ayes in there. We are on to our action agenda then. Item E one. Dr. Sarvis?
Item E one is approval of additions to elementary instrumental music program. We heard the board discussion on this at our last meeting. And you have in front of you a proposal uh, that Robin Sawaski had prepared and I'll let Ms. Sawaski, who's our Assistant Superintendent for Ed, Elementary Educational Services, make that presentation.
Okay. Um, I think it's fairly self-explanatory, so I won't read it all. And you also got a backup before this in the board brief. Um, in working with, both Dr. Sarvis and I worked with the two teachers that are on staff right now, Karen Dutton and Nancy Matheson, and worked toward what would be, in their minds, um, a way, a moving toward a complete music program. This is certainly not the complete program, the ideal program, that we would like in the end when we have instrumental music or Music K through six in our elementary schools. But this is a start at getting back some of the music instruction that we have. So you've got some different options here and the, the shortfall as far as what we have available at this time and what we propose for the projected budget. And my recommendation is to fully fund the elementary instrumental music program, which would be a cost at seventy-four thousand. That would include the instruction in all of the ten non-charter schools. It would also include the all-district orchestra and band instruction, which is an after-school event where we bring the kids together, we bus them, that includes the transportation. So we're, it's a, it's something that we want for our music, but we also want, as far as our outreach to bringing the schools together across the district in different ways. Um, do you have any questions, since it's all, or do you have something else?
I think we should note the uh, the donation on the part of Santa Barbara Education Foundation, if you'd like to do that.
Sure. Right. The, well, there's two actually, I'm not sure what you're talking about, but the one that, last board meeting, um, I think Tina, the president's, or that, not the president, the director, coordinate executive director, um, stood up and said that they immediately would donate the twenty-five thousand dollars if more funding came from the board. There's that piece that I've built in. Also, that's not on here, is a separate item where they've been fundraising for instrumental replacement and repair. And the minimum amount that they have projected they will get is fifty thousand. So that will go for quite a while as far as instrument repair. We're usually around ten thousand dollars a year, something like that. With this program however, where we're covering all fourth grade classrooms, we're looking at an expense of violins or, you know, instruments that would cover the whole class. So we will be purchasing more. And they've already got, they have two grants out, um, that have been secured and they have a lot of other funding for that particular replacement and repair. They said it's much easier to get money for things versus people.
I'd like to make two points as well. The first is that I think there's a misunderstanding about the current uh, elementary instrumental music program. Uh, I hear people saying, "Well, you eliminated the program." We, we do have two full-time teachers in place currently. However, those two full-time teachers are not able to reach all ten schools, uh, which relates to the second point. And the second point is that this is a revamping of the program. This is not simply bringing back the same program. This program would provide instrumental music instruction to every fourth grader, um, classroom based uh, in the district, uh, at the non-charter schools. And it would provide continuing instruction for those interested fifth and sixth grade students. Um, then, an option two, you have the add-on of the all-district band and all-district orchestra. Thank you.
Right, and that, that's correct. In order to access the state grant, we needed to make our program very different. And in fact, this fits much more in line with the ideal program that the teachers have planned before, that we're building toward. Questions?
Dr. Noel?
What's the net difference for option two, between option two and the, the amount the district spent before the budget cutting?
The, the total budget for, the combined budget with everything, three FTEs, the instrument repair, transportation, other things like that, the combined budget last year was around two-hundred-and-forty-three thousand dollars.
Well, I, my question really is.
Right.
This is an enhanced program. Is it, is it an increased cost or is this all re, to the district?
Well, it, what we're doing by, by, is it an increased cost? No, not really. It's an enhanced program because we're taking advantage of the grant, the state grant. We're also taking advantage, you notice there's a Santa Barbara Education Foundation donation of fifty thousand dollars that we already have. That's not counting the twenty-five thousand dollars that they would also provide. So, as far as the difference of two-hundred-and-forty-three compared to fully funding at seventy-four, that's a little miss, it doesn't account for the grant and the other SBEF money in there. So it's actually an enhanced program for less money.
Thank you.
The teachers worked really hard at working together. They, they both go to the sites and in fact, if there was an additional person at some sites, large sites, it might be that three people are there. So they're looking at teaming, making it kind of more efficient for everyone. And uh, so, that's, I don't know, anything else you'd like to add?
Ms. Parker?
So this brings back a point five into the music program? It looks like it's two-point-five FTEs?
Right. A point five for the actual instruction in the classrooms, but that doesn't, the, the after-school is additional.
And that's, okay. My question, you kinda touched on this, is, is instruments for all fourth graders? Cuz we don't have instruments for all fourth graders. And so you're saying they're, they're gonna be grant writing to get, to purchase that? Or how are we gonna buy the instruments?
SBEF already has secured a lot of money. For one thing, Cleveland School has instruments, they already have violins for every fourth grader. That program is in place right now. Karen Dutton is, is teaching that with Nancy Matheson. Um, so the SBEF does have money in hand right now, close to fi, well, over five thousand, I believe, if we added everything up. And, and it's coming in all the time. So they're, they're fairly confident, I mean, they are confident, that they'll have money for that.
Any other questions, comments? I guess I would like to, to plug the, the after-school portion of the program. I think the idea of coming together, students, having the opportunity to come together is a big motivator for students. So, I see it as pretty important. I don't, I, I think we've sort of spun ourselves out on this discussion maybe. We have some public commenters. We have just two. Uh, Frank Anderson and Michael Zarotti.
Good evening again. Uh, I wanna thank the staff for quickly preparing this. Uh, I know that you heard a lot of us talking about this over the last few weeks. It's incredibly important to us to start restoring the funding to the arts and this is the first and best step you can do towards doing that. So I would urge you to vote for option two and fully fund this program. Uh, I would also like to say that this is only a starting point though, because we have lost a lot of funding for a lot of the electives at the secondary level. It's extremely difficult to get them back in this year. But I think we need to start preparing a plan of how we can start restoring those programs next year and not wait longer. Very important for the kids, the longer they stay away from the arts, the less likelihood they'll get back into it. And I also did wanna ask one more thing and it's uh, with regard to the comments I made two weeks ago at the board meeting, and that's uh, the preparation of materials seventy-two hours prior to the meeting. While the agenda was published seventy-two hours prior to the meeting, I was not able to look on the website and pull down this auxiliary information until today. It was not available yesterday. I assume it was made available to the board members, but I don't know that. It was certainly not made available to the general public. And so I think that uh, I would urge the board to once again make a motion mandating this information be made available and not just requesting that it be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Zarotti.
Board members and Dr. Sarvis, thank you. Uh, we should compare notes. He, he said everything I was gonna say. I think the same point, you, you didn't have the information on the website. Uh, I checked at three o'clock yesterday and it wasn't there. But on the music, we, you should do, I think, uh, option number two, but you've got to go and restore classes at the secondary level. And I don't want you to uh, run around on your political fronts after this meeting and say, "Look what we've done. We have restored the music program at the elementary district and aren't we great folks?" And please forget about all of the unbelievable financial disaster that you have caused. Uh, your, your house is not in order, you've ruined teachers' lives, students' lives. So you need to do this, but you need to get secondary reinstatements. And you can certainly do that at the, at the spring break, uh, when they come back from Christmas for the second semester. You can start the arts programs then. You can start a seventh period then, to help on the gang issues. Keep the kids in school longer, give them enrichment opportunities and the children of Santa Barbara will really benefit. Thank you.
Uh, any further discussion by board members?
Well, I, I do just wanna uh, address the point that this is sort of an initial look at um, some of our surplus and what we can do with it and that this is a, I'm so pleased this is on for action tonight and I'm really looking forward to September twenty-fifth, when uh, we will be looking at the secondary electives. Um, I would like to make a motion to approve, approve option two to restore funds to the elementary music program.
Is there a second? Okay. All the, yes?
I'd like to make a motion to amend. Uh, and that would be to, to approve option two and in addition to endorse the principle that all secondary courses that were cut in the humanities and the arts be restored at the earliest possible time, not waiting until next year.
So, the maker of the motion?
I, I can't uh, accept that amendment, just because I, I, you're, you're not clear to me if it's because, there are many reasons why there were electives cut and it was not all because of, um, of the cuts that we made in April.
Well, if I could get a second for my amendment, I would be glad to discuss it.
Then we can vote in backward order. Is there a second for Dr. Noel's motion? Okay, then we return to the original motion. Um, but I need a clar, I would like to ask a clarification. When you, you are talking about option two?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. Okay. So any further discussion?
I'd like to make a comment before we vote.
Certainly.
Uh, I think it's a very sad commentary that, uh, that the concept of restoring the secondary classes as found by my colleagues is not even worthy of discussion. A second simply means it's worthy of discussion. And uh, I think it's a terribly sad commentary on the current situation.
Dr. Noel, can we separate out and maybe perhaps after we're done with this amendment, we'll vote on this? Maybe one of?
The record's the record. I didn't get a second and.
I'd like to separate them.
Somebody will have to make another motion.
Well, I also don't see that as being agendized, but, uh, so that's a problem. But I know it's going to be on the agenda on September twenty-fifth. So I know that we will have this discussion.
And that, and we, we've been waiting since the discovery of the excess funds. We were told June twenty-ninth about that. It's been months that we've known that there's a surplus. There's been ample time to act, but there's been an unwillingness to even consider the possibility. This isn't the first motion of this kind that I've made that has not gotten a second.
Ms. Cordero?
Well, I just wanna say, I think it's terribly sad that one board member chooses to characterize the intentions of the other board members without really asking us what our intentions are. But um, I think all of us uh, know what the public wants to hear and we could all say it, but it doesn't necessarily make it true. Um, we would, we are going to be discussing this on September twenty-fifth. I don't think there's any point in raising a Brown Act issue by acting on something that isn't on our agenda. Um, there's no point in seconding a motion if we know we can't support it because it's not something we can vote on our agenda. And I just think that it's patently unfair to suggest that you know what is in the minds and hearts of the rest of us.
I didn't suggest that, but I do know, I do know a bit about the Brown Act and I think there's no problem whatsoever with the, the amendment that I made.
May I call for the question? We have a motion by Ms. Parker and a second by Ms. Malikoff on the floor. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So it passes five-zero. And now we are on to item E two. Approval of the oh-seven, oh-eight revisions of the local education agency plans for the Santa Barbara Elementary School District and the Santa Barbara High School District.
This LEAP document, the local education agency plan, is very similar to the document you saw last year. Mr. Gonzalez will be highlighting the changes from last year. Mr. Gonzalez is our Director of Compliance. And Robin, were you going to impart the presentation as well on the elementary? Okay.
Thank you very much. Um, I, with one change, I, I will not go through the actual revisions that have been made in the secondary LEAP. I only will share with you that this is a document with a five-year life. We will be obligated uh, next year to completely relook at our local agency plan. I remind you that the No Child Left Behind and the California State Department requires that we produce this document on an annual basis. Essentially, it sets the uh, framework, the foundation, for how we're going to increase student achievement in our district. It serves to guide the single plans for student achievement at all of our schools. On an annual basis, we're required to revise these documents. This past year, uh, we had teams of teachers, administrators, uh, other staff taking a look at this document and that's resulted in these revisions. It does not represent a burden to the general fund. It does quite the opposite. It permits us to seek categorical funds for the, for the district. In a nutshell, it uh, lays out how we're going to work with our teachers, with our administrators in the area of mathematics, English language arts, increasing attendance, increasing student safety and increasing graduation rates at the secondary level, although those things are equally true, except for the graduation levels at the elementary level. Uh, Robin is prepared to speak to the uh, uh, elementary LEAP if you have any specific questions.
Okay, I'll just be, oh, do you wanna, did you wanna ask a question first? Is it related to elementary or secondary? Go for it.
Um, I had a couple of quick questions on my end. Uh, one was just on the first page of the LEAP for the Santa Barbara High School District. Um, I noticed it says date of local governing board approval, June twenty-six, two thousand and seven. Is that just something that's gonna be automatically changed if we?
Uh, yes. Uh, please know that we had originally intended to present this document back to you in April and then in June and we just did not correct that cover page. Should you pass it tonight, it will reflect today's date.
And my other question for secondary is that there, it refers quite a lot to Edusoft and the use of Edusoft for assessment and analysis of student progress. And I'm wondering if, um, how things are going, sort of an Edusoft update is going to be coming to the board, so that we can see how well this program is being integrated into our secondary schools.
That is in the process. That is in the process of being prepared, and it will be presented to you.
Go ahead, Ms. Cordero.
I have a very quick question, and it applies to both districts because it has to do with the form and the way that the formatting of how the information is published. In the tables that you have, that we have at the beginning of each of the reports, it refers to the direct services to students at school sites dollars and percentage. And I just, I wasn't clear on what the percentage means. Is it the percentage of those, of the funds that we get from those categoricals that go to that particular, that have been used in that particular area? Or, and is it the percentage of that whole area that comes from those funds? I don't know if I'm making my question clear, but if you could just explain to me what the percentage means, that would be helpful.
Thank you. Those numbers, and please understand that this is state form, and so we don't have a lot of control over the template, and I grant you it is very, very confusing. But essentially, what it comes down to mean is direct services to students actually means the percentage of monies that went directly to the school sites and were not kept here at the district offices. And you'll, hopefully, you'll find that the percentages are very, very great. And then in another column, you're going to find the actual expenditures that are associated with those entitlements, the actual expenditures that were spent in support of student instruction and activities at the individual sites. So it's kind of like the answer to your question is actually both, but it is, I grant you, a very complicated way to understand it.
Okay, so if I could just ask then for, on, in the secondary budget, and I'm looking at the table and it says Title I Part A, and then percentage is 90, and then it goes down. Title II Part A, the percentage is 96. Title III, limited English proficiency is 85. And then Title III immigrants is 94. So are those two separate funding sources?
Are we referring to Title III specifically right now?
Yes.
And the answer is yes.
Okay, because what I was asking is how can it be more than 100%?
Correct. Under Title III, there's actually two programs. One is specifically for English learners, and the other one is for migrant students who carry their own criteria to enter into the program.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I add just a little bit to that? If you may recall, last year in the elementary budget on the GATE percentage, it was 104%. And we were questioning why that is. The reason it showed up that way in here was it was just numbers put into the system and it spit it out through budgeting. And because the board had in the past given $20,000 additional funding to the GATE program, it showed up in the expenses, and so that's why it was over 100%. This year, I just listed the grant itself, which is the money we get. And of course, that amount that the board gives has also been lessened, but that's why it's 100%. I also wanted to note, it looks low on the EIA economic -- the reason is, if you'll note on the district entitlements, it has $1 million, 156,000. A large sum of that came in April or May. I don't recall. We got a huge chunk of it at the end of the year, and we wanted to wait. We have expenses, you'll see, in the plan, the way we're spending it. We knew it was coming. It was promised all year, but it wasn't here until that time. And so it shows up as looking like the sites didn't, aren't getting that. They are getting it, just they didn't get it last year in the expenses.
Would that, on page eight of the elementary plan, for instance, in one category, it's Title II Part D, 36% went to sites. Is that why the percentage --
That's why that money is still being held. It's for training and technology, and our technology plan is being updated. Davis Hayden's working on that.
Okay. There were a couple of numbers that were alarmingly low, but --
Right. I looked at it and I thought, "Well, I could massage it," but that's exactly what it is. It's got to be true to what it is, but I could explain it, and that's why I'm here doing that. I can talk about the revisions on elementary unless people have other questions.
Dr. Noel?
I just wanted to comment that, and it's really a question and a comment, but we have in the past talked about the provision in many of these programs, the condition that administrative costs not exceed 15% of the total amount given. And that's been, in the past, very hard to look at any one place except line 26 on the, what do you call it, consolidated application, which, of course, the public reads every night before they go to bed, that you couldn't tell whether we were spending too much money on administration. The question is, is this now part of a template that is designed to make that very clear and easy to know?
Dr. Noel, the LEAP document would not serve to clarify that for you. The, that document that referred to that people don't read at night does. And to, just to clarify for the board and for the public, it's actually only Title I that has the 15% cap. Most of the other categoricals restrict administrative costs to about 3% to as much as 13%, but only Title I permits that top-end figure of 15%.
Well, but you couldn't in the LEAP show that you're going to spend over those limits, I trust?
Correct.
That's what I --
But again, I simply point out to you that what keeps us, the check and balances is actually the consolidated application. That's what makes sure that we don't exceed those permissible administrative and enduro costs.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this point in time?
I did have some more, if it's possible at this time. I looked both in the reading and the math section, and I find item number one, alignment of instruction with content standards. I was on the board in 1999 when we adopted the California standards.
I'm sorry, I just want to interrupt you for one second, Dr. Noel. You're in the elementary section and page number. Then we can all follow along.
Well, it's a general question.
Okay, okay.
It's a general question. Are we, when will we get to the point that we don't have to have that as a goal, that we can say that is done, that's an accomplishment? Because it's been a long time since we've become a standards-based curriculum in principle.
I believe that statement will probably always be there. Maybe your suggestion to word it differently could be, "I believe we are aligned to the standards." In fact, one thing I was going to highlight really proves that we are. That piece should always be in our LEAP document because according to the state board-approved of materials and all that we do, we should be always aligned to those content standards. So there are different activities that we continue year after year after year. We have new teachers every year. We have new principals that help us stay aligned to those content standards. So in my opinion, it should always be there.
So there's a maintain, there's a sustain it and maintain it.
Absolutely, right, right.
So it's more like continue to --
Continue to align, yes.
Implement.
Right, and refine. And along those lines, one of the things you may have noted in our LEAP this year is that we are piloting our revised report card, standard space report card. That's been a three-year project that teachers have been working together across the district by grade levels, identifying the assessments and the standards that they feel are essential. We have revised the, once were known as critical standards, that appeared on our, all of our charts on standards and in the report card to parents. And we've revised those now with teachers really working for two years on this as the essential standards that are needed to move on to the next grade level. And more importantly even is the articulation through the grades. And that wasn't necessarily done as, the first report card was a great attempt for what we knew then, and we've refined it even more so. And literally, every teacher's had an opportunity to work on this. So we're piloting that, one whole school and grade-level teams across the district. We're doing training right now. And then we also are building in our standards, the common benchmark standards that go across, I mean, common benchmark assessments to the standards that are going to be used every trimester for those report cards. So we're building that in. And teachers, again, have identified the assessments they're using. They created them. We worked really hard all summer and last year, and we continue to work this year on those assessments. So it's really a teacher-made product, and I think it's better than anything we could buy, actually, myself. So that's added with that. And then the other two things that are new are the teachers on special assignment. They're like coaches for English language development, and many of you were down in the curriculum lab and got to meet Jennifer and Abby, Jennifer Gibson and Abby Vasquez. They're doing a wonderful job. Without me soliciting comments, I begin comments from principals saying, "Wow, these two teachers are incredible." They are sitting down and working with our teachers and creating the year-long pacing and guide for English language development, helping them in the classroom and all. So that's in place, as well as Avid, fourth through sixth grade. That's new. We trained sixth-grade teachers. This year, we're going fourth and fifth. And then the district provided agendas, the student agendas, as I mentioned before, for every fourth through sixth grade student, and binders for every sixth grade, binders with dividers and the pencil pouch thing for every sixth grade student, because that's an expectation to be an effective student. That's, those are the big highlights, I think, that have been revised.
Continue, Dr. Noel.
Yeah, I have two more points. One of them is, I'm out of order here. I mean, I'm, I'm, that's not a comment, that's not a comment on conduct. The first thing I should have said was to simply commend you for this effort because it wasn't all that long ago, we, if you went to the file, we didn't have a plan on file. And now there's a plan on file, and it's being revised in a timely fashion as per the education requirements from the state, and it's a pretty comprehensive and thorough effort. However, I see one, one thing that I wanted you to explain. I'm on 49-50, something like that, performance goal, all students will be educated in learning environments that are safe, drug-free, and conducive to learning. And then in each of the boxes, I see language that I recognize as coming out of the Healthy Kids Survey. For example, we want to reduce, we've got targets here to reduce the percentage of kids who have used marijuana within the last 30 days. That's a question on the Healthy Kids Survey. Reduce the percentage of kids who feel, who don't feel very safe at school. We want to increase that, pardon me. No, we want to reduce that one. The next one, we want to, we want to reduce the number who are afraid of being beaten up at school. And there was one set of questions in the Healthy Kids Survey that is not reflected in the plan, and that's questions about reducing the number of reports of weapons on campus. And I would think if we're talking about a healthy and safe environment, that yes, alcohol and marijuana are all important things, but it's also very important to keep weapons off campus and set some targets, set some goals.
I would agree with that. This, again, is an example of what Mr. Gonzalez talked about. This is a template that we have to fill out. We can't add to it. So I don't create these. In fact, I found it interesting, as you know, some have third grade, excuse me, fifth grade on it, some don't. So some of them don't even apply to elementary. Some, yeah, so we have to fill this out the way it is based on the most recent Healthy Kids Survey. So I can't add that to it. I agree with you as far --
We can't add a local line item that says we, that sets a goal?
There's probably a place to do that in here, but that's not the way this is supposed to be filled out for that.
I would certainly like to see us set that as an explicit goal. Thank you very much. Those are my comments.
Sure, thank you.
May I just comment on that? This section is really under safe and drug-free schools and communities and tobacco use prevention. So most of the questions are about those issues, but I do understand we need to make sure we're on top of that.
Any other questions or comments from board members on the report? I just have one additional question apart from the budget question, and it has to do with secondary, and it's page 59 of the secondary report. And it's, the latest data is from '05-'06, and it has to do with the dropout numbers. And I realize that as compared to '01-'02 and years in between, these are probably some of the largest classes that we've had graduating, so the numbers would be larger. And yet, when you look at the percentage increase at the, in the bottom of the page, the percentage is slightly higher than it was for the preceding couple of years. So I'm wondering if we can get additional information at some point in time on how we are doing with our dropout rate.
Dr. Davis Hayden and I have actually had this discussion, and it quickly devolves into a convoluted statistical analysis that only Dr. Noel, I think, would appreciate. Part of it contains the issue of the way that a dropout is defined, both federally and through the state, the ability of the system, school systems, then locally to catch up with the new definition, and then, which is also partly why that number '05-'06 is larger. It's the system catching up to the new definition. Right about '05-'06, the definition changes again, and so we're going to go through the same thing again. And it also comes down to, I suppose, an element of human error in that if a student leaves a high school, the registrar phones whatever the next stop is supposed to be, if it's City College, et cetera. And so if there is no next stop, that student becomes technically a dropout. We also have some students who have been coded as dropouts when they didn't actually show up at the beginning of the year, which was an incorrect coding, so to speak. Instead of not enrolled or no show, it became dropout.
And I understand that this is a form with a template that's dictated by another entity.
Correct.
Is there, is there any way that we could put together information that was dictated by our own definition of?
Yes.
Yeah, let me interject if I may. I think it's only fair that the board have the best information we have on dropouts. So we will put together a report, and we can include it in the board brief that does have our current counts and has a definition of those counts.
Yeah, absolutely. And yes, just to answer your question, we've already begun that particular conversation. It's the definition that's the rub.
A few weeks ago, I was in an event where there was a little side discussion about dropouts. And I heard someone say that one of the problems is that there's not a dropout until they notify the district that they've dropped out. And I found that --
That's true. No.
Okay. I wanted to get your reaction.
We literally have to, we find the next stop on the students' journey.
So if someone just is not showing up, when do they cease being a truant and become a dropout?
Well, or not enrolled and then a dropout, right? There are a couple of different areas in there. Generally speaking, you can have, and this comes into testing through No Child Left Behind as well, there's continuous enrollment. A student can potentially be gone for a few weeks and then re-enroll. So we have that student sort of in parentheses, so to speak, still an entity at the school, but then we wait X amount of time, usually three weeks, before we actually find out whether or not the student has landed somewhere else. So I'm very happy to --
How do you find, how do you find out where the --
The registrar has to make contact with the next receiving educational entity. If it's a high school, if it's a middle college, if it's a community college or a university or homeschool through a county office.
I see. Thank you.
For the most part, though, the definition is exactly the opposite. If a school, if a student has left the school, and I mean left the school and has been disenrolled, and we don't receive a request for the transcript within 45 days, then --
That's the indicator.
That's the indicator.
Can I just ask, if we're going to have this data in a board brief, could we also have it broken down by various demographics? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Gonzalez or either of the assistant superintendents on the LEAP that's in front of us?
I move to adopt.
Okay. So there's a motion from Noel, second from Malakoff, to approve the '07-'08 revisions of the local education agency plans for the elementary school district and the high school district. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The plan is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Now we are on to our conference agenda. And the first item on the conference agenda is the Report on the State Academic Performance Index, API, and the Federal Adequate Yearly Progress, AYP, No Child Left Behind, and Program Improvement Stats.
Tonight's -- Tonight's report by Dr. Davis Hayden, Director of Research and Technology, is the report that was just released by the state. And while I'm always eager to give this myself, Davis, why don't you give the report?
All right. Thank you for having me here. As it says up here, there's a lot of initials on this one. You can see here that this is the API, Academic Performance Index, and that is a state measure. And it's also the Adequate Yearly Progress, which is the NCLB or the federal measure. And then there's PI status, which is Program Improvement Status, which is also federal. So sorry for all the initials. We get used to them around here, but I know that some people may not follow them that readily. And that's what we're going to be reporting on. Okay, forward. There we go. Okay. I hope you can all read this. This is the overview for the elementary district. And if you have questions about individual schools, I have all the goals that the board focus goals, and I think they're in the packet, and you all have a copy of them. And you can look at, we can look at details of individual schools if you wish to. I also have a copy of what is put out on the webpage by the California Department of Education, which can give more details on this year's scores if you wish to ask any details. You can see here in the first column, which I'll use, I'll use this guy for. This column here is the federal No Child Left Behind. And we have three schools that were already in Program Improvement Status, which is over here, and they continue in Program Improvement Status, advancing to the next year, because they missed it at least in one category. Now, the category that almost every school missed it in is English category and English learners. So we still have problems getting our English learners to get advanced enough in English to pass the English category, which, of course, sort of makes sense. Most schools in the state of California are also having problems with that one. We have one, several schools that are new in terms of not passing. Monroe did not pass in one of the categories. Santa Barbara Charter did not pass in participation rate. Okay? And Santa Barbara Community Academy also did not pass in one category. So we got some new notes. They are not in Program Improvement Status, but if they don't pass this year, they will be.
But Santa Barbara Charter?
Santa Barbara Charter is not a Title I school, and neither is Open Alternative. So two of our schools in the, in this category are not Title I schools, so they will not, they do not, the federal provisions or penalties do not apply to them. So this is, we have a lot of yeses, so we still have quite a few schools that are managing to still make the federal targets, and they're going up by about 10 points, 10 percentage points this year. We can look at the API, or questions. We can now look at the API, which is the state measure, and these, these two columns are state measures. The state has a goal of 800. And what that means is that if you achieve an API of 800, you're basically in safe territory. It's considered to be a really good school if you're at 800 or above. Okay? And you can see here, we have several schools, Washington at 875, Roosevelt 835, Peabody 818. And then we have a bunch of schools that are getting really close to that. They're all in the 700s to high 700s. Community Academy, even though I got a no over here, it's doing quite well here. Santa Barbara Charter Elementary, Open Alternative, Monroe, Cleveland, and Adams, all up there approaching the 800 number. These are good scores for schools in the state of California. We can also, go ahead.
I just, every year when we do this, I, I have to enter the same statement. This will be the, almost the ninth year. Washington is always a little bit confusing, not an accurate statement, because there is a gate program drawing students from all over town, 100, 100 students, and the last time I counted, 105, something like that. And they're part of that figure. And the last, the, the last time I saw anything that separated the gate program out and tried to give an estimate for the general population of Washington, it was nowhere near 875.
No, but they were still above 800.
It was not over 800.
When we ran the stats for it, Bob, just last year, I haven't run for it this year, we found that the gate students from it did not change. Well, we didn't use the API, we used the percent proficient. It did not change it a heck of a lot from what they were without the gate students there. So yes, there is a change, but I, I don't, I think they would still probably make the 800 mark. I'm not sure of that.
But I do think Dr. Noel makes a good point in that these schools are made up of very different students, and it actually can be a little bit more informative to look at the subgroup APIs rather than an overall schools API.
And we have that in the, in the board focus goals that you have as a packet. You can see the subgroups API on that. So, yes, you're right.
But then you have to make some assumptions about the, who's in, who's in the gate program, what subgroups? Is it predominantly a white program, a, a high-income program, or is it a diverse, with a high proportion of poor people, of kids from poor families? I mean, I know what assumptions I made, but it'd be nice to have data.
Dr. Noel, unfortunately, you're not near your mic, so I'm, I'm not sure everybody's catching your comments.
I'll sit back and watch the show.
We had a Latino report a couple of months ago, and it had it all broken down by many of the groups that you're talking about. And if people wish to, they can go back and, and pull that up again, and see, a lot of the things you're talking about are very true, that, that as you look at the subgroups, you see quite a bit of dispersion or, you know, scores go up and down by the subgroups at each school. So we have some schools that are not as strong. They're still good scores, but they're not, they're not strong enough, I guess you would have to say. And these are also the schools that we're having program improvement or we're having some no marks for in terms of making the percent proficient. So over here, finally, is the last column, and we have three schools in program improvement, and the rest of them are still are not in program improvement. Hopefully, we can do something about that. We're working, I know that Robin is working very hard with the elementary program to work on the English learners and try to get programs installed that will bring those scores up. Whether they can do it in time for the 10 percentage point ra, raising scores for this year, that I don't know.
Do you, do you have any explanation for this drop in the Santa Barbara Community Academy? And, and any, any insights about where they stand for, for next year? Because if it happened, if, if there are no again next year, that, that school, which has had a remarkable record, will become a sanctioned school?
Yes, I, I agree with you on that one. I, I could point to, just to go off a little bit. I look at Open Alternative and Santa Barbara Elementary. They bounce back and forth. They're smaller schools. They're a different type of school. They have a lot of variability. They go up and down in their scores. This one is a minus 18. I don't know. I mean, we could talk about the split campus. We could talk about the move. We can talk about all sorts of things. But I don't know if that's what's causing this or not. The subgroup that they, yeah, I've got it right here, is, they had a 16.0% proficient in English learners and English language arts.
Say that again.
16% proficient. So I'm going to, one of the things I will do is, when I look at data corrections, I'm going to take a close look at their English learners and see if there are some, some English learners that were put into the wrong categories.
Do you happen to recall what it was last year?
Oh, it was much higher than that, because they made the mark. It had to be 24.4 or higher.
It was 27.4%.
Right. So I noticed that sometimes when we have great disparities like that, where scores go up and down, in the, in the last couple of years, I've managed to do data corrections, because I found that a bunch of kids were mislabeled. So one of the things I will look at for Santa Barbara Community Academy is to find out were kids mislabeled. Many, as you recall, we changed our student information system from SASE to ARES. And many of the STAR data, some of it was done, was rollover from SASE. And we had so many problems in SASE that we had a lot, you know, a lot of data corrections needed to be done with the SASE data. We found that with the ARES pre-ID information that goes in, it's much cleaner, and I hope we won't have those problems in the future. So I'm hoping that there'll be data corrections there, but right now I haven't had a chance to look at it.
Well, we have looked at the data with the principal, and, and we know what areas these are in at Community Academy.
It's not an anomaly, just one particular class that's, I mean, if it's very, in very small schools, it takes very few people to, to kick it over a threshold or under a threshold.
In fact, you'll hear.
Is that going on here?
You'll hear, yes, and you'll hear plenty more about it in the, in the single plan presentation.
But in the meantime, it's Monroe and the Community Academy that are at risk of program improvement next year.
Yes, that's true. And once again, Monroe, I'm, I'm also going to look at their data to see if there's, for instance, I was going through San Marcos data today, and there were at least 30 or so students in the English learner and ARFEP categories that were mislabeled. And it's just a matter of correcting them and sending it back in.
There's some information just in the Cesar Chavez experience, because they had an enormous amount to make up, to make it this year. Weren't they very, very low last year?
Well, we have two success stories, and I was going to mention that. Cesar Chavez is one of them. And we get to secondary, it's going to be La Cumbre is another strong success story. And I think what's happening at Cesar Chavez, and Robin, you can correct me if I'm off here, is that they finally have their full complement of programs and classes. And so what we have is we finally kicked in the kids who have been in the school all the time from kindergarten, has it been on? And, and so what we're finally seeing is that it's not a new school any longer. It's starting to be a mature school, and you're starting to see the scores rising. And I, I, I hope that that'll continue this year, too. So, but fortunately, they made it, because now they've got basically two more years before they have to worry about program improvement.
Ms. Cordero, you've been waiting.
I just had a question. I, one of the, one of the problems with NCLB is once a school is in PI status, it's so difficult to get out. And I was just wondering if, if you have any data on statewide, do, are there many schools that are managing to get out of PI status?
Not many, but yes, there are. There's, there's quite a few schools who do get out of PI status, and.
Isla Vista.
Isla Vista is an example. I'm hoping La Cumbre is going to be an example next year. And I think what you find is that in some cases, there were schools that were so far down that Safe Harbor kicked in in many categories. For instance, for Cesar Chavez, Safe Harbor kicked in in a couple of categories. They made so much progress. You can see there's 25-point growth here. They made so much progress that a thing called Safe Harbor, which is that if you make a lot of progress, you don't have to make the cutoff for No Child Left Behind. They'll take the progress and say, okay, we're going to give you the benefit of the doubt, that you're actually working hard, and, and we'll give you the, you know, green light for that cat, that subgroup. And so La Cumbre also had some Safe Harbors. And what can happen is that if you have a school that's really rising, you can get maybe Safe Harbor one year, and you actually clear it the next year. And so there are schools that do get out, there's a good number of them, but most don't. It's hard. It's hard to get out once you go in. Okay, and so this is the elementary. And if we go to the next one, we get to secondary. And in the secondary, we had Galita Valley go in for socio-economically disadvantaged in math. So they dropped quite a bit there. Once again, I'll look at data corrections, but I have a feeling I'm not going to find enough data corrections for Galita Valley. They are, at the same time, at 814 on API. It's, this is one of those odd things where the state is saying, you're an excellent school, and the federal government is saying you're a failing school. And it's like, you know, what, which is it? And I think I would rather look at this 814, because it's just one category that they're having problems with. And they got to address that, of course.
Yeah, I, I look at that, and I, I immediately say, this is a school that's diverse, it's got, it's got to be two distinctly different populations in term of, of performance. So, and, and one group is pulling it up. But you, but the other group gets scored as a group and pulls it down.
Absolutely. And that's, that's unfortunate. A lot of our schools are in exactly that same position.
But I, I actually have to say that I think that this is one of the benefits of No Child Left Behind, is that you cannot let your, your high overall score and your high students hide the fact that you have problems with some of your students.
You know, I would say that for the English learner subgroup, I know there's been a lot of talk about that. That is a tough one, because if they're English learners, it seems like there should be some kind of break for the English portion of the test. But for the math portion of the test, I think we have a lot less of a sympathy for granting a.
And also for, I mean, obviously, socio-economically disadvantaged, you will have a large percentage of English learners in that group, but.
But they passed the ELA part of it. So, yes, I understand what you're saying, though. I agree.
I also agree that, while, I mean, I think most of us feel that there's not a lot of great things about NCLB. But this is one of the issues that I think was what NCLB was designed for and where it is actually benefiting a lot of our students, in that it is forcing us to, to really focus on the, on the, all of the different subgroups, and not just rely on one subgroup to bring up the scores. But also, I kind of, I don't feel comfortable talking about the subgroups as either bringing down the scores or bringing up the scores, because I, I think that tends to put the onus on the students, when really, the intent of NCLB, and I think certainly our intent, is to put the onus on the schools and on ourselves to make sure that we are bringing up the students who need to improve their scores, and maintaining the students who are doing well. So I think, I actually, in some ways, prefer to look at the, at Galita Valley's no and looking at where's that we need to improve there, while at the same time recognizing that there are, that overall, we're doing pretty well.
You know, it's one of those odd things, isn't it? It's a, it's a great school, Galita Valley. It's got lots of good programs, lots of good things going on. And yet, they need to have more work in a few categories, and NCLB helps point that out, but the API points out it's a good school. Maybe they could take a, you know, you got to fail on both of them to have a failing school. That would be maybe a better way to look at it, but. Okay, so then we have La Colina at 849. It's doing great. Growth is up. La Cumbre is the other success story, though, because they have really turned around that school, 47-point growth in API. I think we have some La Cumbre fans here. Now, one of the things interesting about that is that La Cumbre is, of course, I mean, I don't have the percentage in front of me here, but it's, it's almost all Latino, and it's got a huge English learner population. And it's also got a large, special education population. And so they've done a remarkable job with succeeding with all those groups. They're frozen. That means they did not advance in PI. And if you look at their scores, there is a possibility that they've actually already made this year's mark in some categories, and only a few points away in others. There's a good chance they're going to pull out a PI, like I mentioned earlier.
I think it might be helpful for the public to explain about the rising target or the threat, the expectation. You said, you called it this year's mark.
Right, it's on the, those goal things. I don't have it right here in front of me. It was 24.4 in English last year. I think it's going to be 35?
Thirty, 35.2.
Percent proficient.
Percent, percent proficient, right. So it's going to go from about a quarter of the students in all the subgroups having to be proficient, what they call proficient, to about a third of all the subgroups being proficient. And like I say, in many categories, they've already made it.
La Cumbre, so it's, it's not that they just barely made it this year. They're already, or this past. already, or this past year, they're already close to having made it at the same level of performance.
There's a couple of subgroups that they're still not quite there with, you know, not, not at that mark yet, and if they make substantial growth, they can still get Safe Harbor to kick in to make it. So I'm, I think there's a good chance they'll, they'll do it. They're working hard there.
If I may-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I ju, I, go ahead and finish your question.
No, I just wanted to, to ask Dr. Sarves if we are, if we are all going over to La Cumbre now and trying to find out how they did it, and see, see if there's some lessons in it for other schools.
I bet you.
Sure.
What I wanted to interject was, I, I have some data accumulations from the County Office of Ed, and in terms of API growth, La Cumbre was the third highest score in the county. So their, their forty-seven point growth was the third highest growth-
Mm-hmm.
-in all schools. We're not, not just secondary, in all, in all schools in the county.
Well, it was the, we go back, forty-four at Santa Barbara Elementary, but they dropped the year before. I mean, this is like, you know, they go up and down a lot, but they're the largest in our district in terms of growth, so. Santa Barbara Middle's a small school, it's not Title I. La Calina, by the way, is not Title I. Santa Barbara Junior High, strong API, but they did not make it again. Still dropped a little bit in API. They're going into year four, so they're gonna be the same year as La Cumbre now. There is a possibility, John Becko and I have looked over the numbers, and we've looked over the numbers, and we've looked them over. There are some mislabeled students, there are some students who were not continuously enrolled, things of that nature. We're gonna try to see whether, 'cause they're close in a few categories to making what's, you know, the Safe Harbor. I don't think they're gonna make it, but we're gonna give it a good try to look for honest mistakes that were made in the pre-ID. You, you see, the pre-ID goes in a long time earlier, and we, the pre-ID has lots of variables in it, and it's pulled out of the database. The database, of course, is put in by the schools, and there's lots of trading of students and stuff like that. There's a lot of errors in the database that we're constantly trying to correct. You only need three or four students to be mislabeled to switch your percent of performance in a small subgroup tremendously. And so if we find, you know, three or four students mislabeled, we might be able to change a score to a Safe Harbor, and that's what we're gonna look for. We're looking for real mistakes in the data. Dos Pueblos, this is close to, close to being right, but once again, it's gonna be corrected. And I have to let you know what happened here. When we sent the boxes of KC scores, California High School exit exam, back to Educational Testing Services, they all had a paper on top that was a bubbled-in paper that said what they were. ETS made a mistake on scanning that paper, not for just our school, but for many schools, our district, but for many districts. And so because there was a conflict in the bubbled-in portion for the grade that the students were in, versus what was on the actual test, which was proper grade, they put them in as all unknown. So Santa Barbara High only had two students entered into their KC exam, so obviously-
I'd like to add, they were both very, very good students.
So, there is no valid score for Santa Barbara High at all, with just two students going into the KC. I mean, there will be, once all the data corrections are in, so I have to make a lot of data corrections. San Marcos is the same thing. I wouldn't, as I said today, I've been going through San Marcos' data for the KC, and I've already found, geez, I've probably found fifty major corrections in San Marcos already.
Is, is there not any way for ETS to make those corrections?
No, ETS probably didn't catch it until too late, and then the onus is on us to correct them.
And how, I know obviously that federal AYP is completely based on the 10th grade KC exam.
That's right.
What about API scores?
The API also includes the 10th grade KC exam.
What, what weight is it given?
Oh, I think it's around fifteen, twenty percent, something like that. I'd have to calculate it out.
And is it based on the fact that they're 10th graders?
Yes. And only in the, it's, yes, and so-
It's only the 10th grade KC.
Only the 10th grade piece goes in. So what happens here is this seven eighty-three, it's probably plus or minus ten points. It could go up, it could go down, it could stay the same, once the KC scores are put in properly. Now, I've already gone through DP scores, and if you look on your, on the, the larger sheet that has all the, the board focus goals, I think you see that the EL category has like a one point three percent, one point eight percent. But the problem with that is, is that none of the ARFEP students got added into the EL category for DP. So all those data corrections I have to make, and once again, this is a SASE issue, the old student information system. I've already calculated DP. DP makes it at twenty-three point one, I think is what it was. And they need it twenty, what, twenty-two point three, and I think they got twenty-three point one. So I'm just hoping that my data corrections all go in properly.
So that's for their AYP?
That's for their AYP.
But the state already, for Dos Pueblos, the state already thinks that they-
Yes, but that's without the data corrections. So once the data corrections go in, I think this is gonna stay a yes. It looks like it will.
But you don't know what their API is gonna do.
Their API, I'm imagining, guessing, is, it's gonna stay somewhat similar to this, 'cause it's a smaller, it's a small percentage of it. So it probably will stay close to seven eighty-three.
So it is possible to go down nine points and still make all the subcategories?
That's where API and AYP are just so different measures. They're totally, they look at different things. So, yes, they, they lost nine points, but they made No Child Left Behind.
Dr. Hayden?
Yes.
Could you, in, in talking about this year's new targets, could you also mention the fact that the, the state now has an issue with students with special, or with disabilities?
Well, that's where, when I said La Cumbre, I'm hoping they're gonna make it. One of the reasons why I'm hopeful they're gonna make it is because of Safe Harbor. They have the possibility of making it when their English Language Arts section for students with disability in, by getting Safe Harbor. Most of our schools won't have that possibility. This year, in this, or actually, last year in the state of California, the special ed population did not have enough people participate. They dropped below the ninety-five percent participation rate. The federal government was unhappy with that. Only in the English Language Arts, they made it in the math section. So the federal government decided that because they did not make ninety-five percent participation, they were gonna withdraw the twenty percentage points that they were granting the spe, the special ed kids. So almost all of our schools next year are gonna have a hard time making students with disabilities, because they gotta get up to that thirty-five point, whatever it is, percent in ELA. The only schools that are gonna make it are schools who can get Safe Harbor in that category. So actually, it's kinda one of these reverse issues. If you have a low score in students with disability, you have a chance of making it. If you have a high score in students with disability, you probably won't make it. Now, is that odd? I mean, is that wrong, is the word for it, I guess?
Do we have any secondary schools? And I know that there's actually just a few elementary schools that have a significant subgroup of, of special ed students, but are there any secondaries that don't have a large enough subgroup of special ed students to-
La Calina, which is, of course, doesn't have to worry about it.
It's not Title I, anyway.
So, we're probably gonna have quite a few schools get their first mark against them in the subgroup of special education in the secondary, and some schools in the elementary. Okay? Just, I can't do anything about that one.
May I make a comment? I know we're gonna, we're close to our time limit here, and we need to wrap this up. But Dr. Hayden did a great job this year of taking all those rules of inclusion and applying them correctly, and coming up with estimates in advance of these reports, and, and giving people a heads-up at the sites. And that's rather unusual. They're very complex. There's just so much data that goes into each of those, that most districts don't even bother with that, they just wait until the reports come out.
But what a tremendous advantage to principals.
Yes.
Well, there's not much else to go over. Not in PI. I think one of these two schools will get a mark against them. They may both this year. Okay, it's been a struggle in their EL groups, and I have a feeling they, they might both get a mark against them this year. Secondary district, I don't know what the district's gonna do. Up here, I don't have enough data, and for the secondary district as a whole, it's way too complex for me to try and calculate it, so I probably won't. And I'll just make the data corrections for the schools, and we'll see.
I just praised your ability to produce those calculations.
By the time you get to here, the problem with this one is that these are, all the middle schools are whole, are using STAR scores, and they're using a different percent proficient than the high schools. It becomes a very complex formula to do that one, and I just don't have the time. I could do it, but I don't have the time. I mean, that's the honest truth. Okay, there's only a couple things to show here. You have this on your, on the handouts. This is the overall chart for the elementary, and there is, from two thousand and three, four, there is slight growth, there is slight growth, and there is slight growth. And I know that we want more than slight growth, but, okay, and-
What's the percentage, is it percent proficient, or?
Well, it's been twenty-four point four, so this is the English learners, is where the elementary district keeps not making it for getting out of PI. It's this number right here. They're just, just underneath it. They've made it in all the other categories. And that's for ELA. Math scores are substantially better, and they're doing fine there.
But again, you can see that they're very flat, and there's been no closing of the achievement gap at all.
No. I can't give you secondary, there's too many problems with trying to give you secondary for right now. Any other questions about our, our benchmark, or I don't know, our, our year-long, year-end summaries for No Child Left Behind and API? We finally have all the scores now, well, not all of them, but most of them.
As, as Dr. Sarves indicated, we'll have more stabs at this, at future meetings. Are there any board comments or questions at this point? We have one public speaker. Well, let's hear the public speaker.
That is Lane Wheeler.
Thank you. Once, once again, I would just like to speak on behalf of the teachers in our school district. Three points on AYP and API. Our schools, driven by great teachers, like those that are here tonight from La Cumbre and all of our other schools in our district, have moved scores exponentially higher than they were eight to ten years ago. And I think it's really important for the public to really focus on that point. As a prior, former first grade teacher, when I was told that students would have to read it forty-five words a minute, I said, I don't know if that can happen. We worked really hard, and they got there. Then it raised to sixty words a minute in fluency, and boy, I don't think that's possible, and sure enough, we got there. So our teachers have risen, raised scores at such an incredible level, I think it's really important to keep that in the conversation, that we have made progress. The second point, the National Education Association, the California Teachers Association, are leading the challenge to the federal government to refund, reauthorize, and rewrite No Child Left Behind, and make it legislation that truly benefits students. The percentage jump next year to thirty-five-plus percent points is going to be a true litmus test of how draconian this piece of legislation is. When our top schools are in PI because of the rate of increase, Montecito, Coal Springs are in PI because of the rate of increase, we're gonna realize then that we have made an error. I would encourage our audience and our viewers at home to contact their legislators about, and make comments about how important it is to reauthorize this piece of legislation, but to get it right this time. We've had a number of years of poor legislation, and we've made the best of it, and it's time now to get this piece of legislation right, if we're gonna be saddled with it. And the third part of this is to refund this thing, make it a doable project, because we have the dollars out there that we need. So I would encourage all of us, including the board, to make a public statement on that. It'd also behoove our district to be diligent on our test scores. Dr. Hayden, last year, when I was still at Monroe, we were in the same situation, and with some very last-minute investigations, found out that we had scores that were incorrect, and it kept that school out of the one-year window from being in PI. So I'm glad he's doing this, I hope we don't wait till the deadline of October thirty-first to make these corrections. It is terribly demoralizing to schools to think that they have made it, and then to find out they are in a possible PI situation. So I would really encourage our district to be diligent with that effort. And also, I think it's especially important to note that the Educational Testing Service is not God, and they do make mistakes, especially as we've seen with this last bit of demonstration here, on not getting the test scores incorrectly. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanna thank you again, Dr. Hayden. Your, your reports are always extremely clear, the board appreciates it, and you can field all of our questions. We appreciate it. Shall we take our break now, come back a few minutes before nine, and start with item F2? So we'll take a break. Item F2, Facilities Master Plan Update, the Administrative Final Report. And Dr. Sarves, I'll turn it over to you, I don't see Mr. Hattjunk.
Well, I don't see Mr. Hattjunk here either. Dave Hattjunk is our Director of Facilities and Operations, and we'll need him to run the slides, certainly. The Facilities Master Plan has been in process for quite a while. This last year, our discussion about Santa Barbara Community Academy and the La Cumbre Campus really slowed everything down. Once that decision was made, then we wanted to get you all of the information, so that we don't have to continually update this and get a publication date to it. Tonight is a draft of that presentation, if there's more information the board would like, tonight is the time to say so, because this is actually a preliminary report, and Pat Salley will be coming back to you at a future meeting, and giving you the final final, unless you think everything's in order and, and we don't need anything else. So, with that, shall I go right to Pat Salley, or Dave, do you want to introduce it?
You're doing fine. Clicker forward, back, there's the new laser. Watch out.
Don't blind anyone. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. This is the next in a continuing succession of updates on the Facilities Master Plan Update, and we're getting very near the end, and, and that's really exciting. Just briefly, first of all, Dos Pueblos Theater under construction. I'm gonna give you real quick background, talk about what we've been doing since the interim report was released last July, talk a bit about the new information that we have included in the plan. We've added all the oh-six, oh-seven data, and we even have estimates for oh-seven, oh-eight in terms of enrollment. Talk about the shared sites that, as Dr. Sarves said, we've been concentrating on in the last year and a half or so. Take any questions or comments, of course, hear from the public, and see where we go from there. As you know, the first Facilities Master Plan was approved almost four years ago now, and that was a document that had a lot of data, but not a lot of public input, and we've certainly corrected that this time round. The Facilities Master Plan Update was initiated about just over a year later, last August. The board gave a lot of direction as to what would be appropriate or deserved additional study in terms of those shared sites, and we've spent a lot of time on those issues, hopefully vetted them pretty carefully. And some total of about seventy meetings have been held, virtually all of them in public forums, except for the ones at the school sites with staff and site councils and such, but that's a lot of meetings, a lot of input. The goals, the ones on the left, the bond priorities and basic- The goals, the ones on the left, the bond priorities and basic goals for all schools, they have been in the Facilities Master Plan from the get-go. The same top right, our goal to avoid splitting any programs. And corollary to that is just how to manage campuses where there is more than one program. This version of the update has three new goals, these are goals, relating to elementary classroom allocation and something that the board's been discussing. But the idea of giving some guidance as to how, especially as some of the enrollments drop, how those vacated classrooms should be used. We give some parameters for the issues that should be discussed as part of the school closure discussion, should that come about. And then we talk a bit about coordination of calendars. There are three basic school calendars that are under your control. And from a facility standpoint, there's certainly some advantage to having those be better coordinated, subject to negotiation and all that. I understand that. The kinds of information we have included, updated information, it's all signified by a vertical line in the margin. We've updated the, all the bond construction projects. Mr. Hetjank and his staff have done incredible amount of work in that area. As I said, we have the new C-beds, enrollments, and transfers and estimates. We have, we've gone from laying out options for the shared sites to including recommendations based on direction that you gave last summer and also the subsequent meetings specifically related to Lacumbra and the academy. We have included updated school posters, and those are still being reviewed by the principals. They need some fine tuning, so when we finally publish the final plan, we'll be pretty sure, at least at that point in time, that is accurate information. And we have retained what used to be Table 19 and 20, it's now Appendix J and Appendix K, which is needs and wishes of all the school campuses, at least those that chose to participate. It's a good information for future reference. Here's where we are in terms of enrollment. And the 2006-7 column is new. There has been, you know, still remaining over 16,000 students. The, the drop in the last year was, I think it was 1.6%, one of the bigger drops overall in this, what, six-year period. But you can see some trends here, and that all feeds into facility use. We, this is a new table that's in the plan. And we looked at the neighborhood schools, first of all, along here, and neighborhood, non-charter, you can call them what you will. But these are all the schools, you know, the Hardings, the Franklins, the Roosevelts, et cetera. And there has been a slow gradual decline. What's really interesting, though, when you look at the charter schools, which is sort of this reddish color, there is a, a slow increase as this has been going down. And then what we call the schools of choice, Open Alternative and Santa Barbara Community Academy, those two schools are also slowly increasing in enrollment. So it, it really shows the role that the sort of non-neighborhood, non-charter schools play in terms of overall enrollment and facility needs in the district. Transfers, just giving you a couple of years, in terms of students coming from outside the districts, in the elementary, a slight decline, same in the secondary. Interesting within the school districts, that might be a student lives down, you know, the east side and goes to Dos Pueblos or whatever. In the elementary, and the board, about a year ago, I believe it was, adopted some new transfer policies. And there has been a real drop in the number of transfers in the elementary grades. Junior highs, not too much of a change. High schools have dropped somewhat as well. We also just, for information, just got today the data for the opposite of this. Students from Santa Barbara districts going to another district. And in the secondary schools, there are, I believe it was about 36 students total, both last year and this year, that are going to other districts, almost all of those going to Carpinteria. 30 out of 33 one-years, I recall. One other thing that is mentioned in the report is the Hope School District. As you know, they changed their policies starting a year ago in terms of transfers. Roughly, one, one out of their three schools equivalent was filled with transfer students. And they changed those policies and the results have been in '05-'06, before those policies changed, there were 239 Santa Barbara School District elementary students going to the Hope District, transferring. And this last year with the new policies, that 239 dropped to 176. And just for information, going the other way from Hope to Santa Barbara, it was 44. Two years ago, 35 this last year. So those numbers are pretty much of a wash. But have seen fewer Santa Barbara kids going to Hope, presumably as a result of the change in policies.
If I can interrupt you for one second on this slide, Ms. Salley. I'm assuming that these numbers come from the tables that are on, oh, you know, the twenties, like 24, 25, 26 in the, in the big report. And on page 25 and 26, there are addition errors. And so I don't know if it impacts the numbers that are on, on this slide. I can't compare because these are whole numbers and I don't add that fast in my head. But the La Colina numbers going across don't add up, and so I don't know about the total number.
Okay, we'll check that.
Then on page 26, all of the high school numbers don't add up going horizontally.
Horizontally, okay. We'll check that. Thank you. Okay. Okay, moving to the shared sites. The first one studied is Franklin and Cesar Chavez over on the east side. And here is an instance where recommendations from the 2003 Facilities Master Plan come into play. The board at that time felt that and passed a motion that there should be no more than 800 students on that campus in those two programs. And, and at the time, there were definitely well over 800 students total. Since then, Franklin in particular has dropped some students. They were up in the 700s at that time. Cesar Chavez last year had 218, you know, C-bed students, the official number. This year, they're estimating 245. We won't know what that number is for several months, that official number. Franklin has dropped last year 564 to 509. And then we have looked at Cleveland as a part of all this and they dropped just a bit, from 368 to 359. We looked at Cleveland because one idea that the board had asked us to explore was shifting some of the incoming Franklin students, kindergarteners, like oldest child, for example, up to Cleveland to help even those numbers out and try to get below 800. But natural attrition seems to have taken care of that. The board's direction was to not split Cesar Chavez between Franklin and Cleveland, again, because that school's enrollment was declining, and to keep Cesar Chavez at the Franklin site. So we've talked to both schools several times. The overall goal and recommendation for these two programs is that they continue to share facilities, obviously intending to provide quality programs. Shift the Cesar Chavez entrance over to Wilson Street. It's perpendicular to Mason and kind of, so they'd have different addresses and more separate identities. Reclaim a parking area, I think that's Volontario, if I remember correctly. There had been some portables out there when the classrooms were being constructed, but it's, it's sort of a no man's land and could be used for parking, which is one of the issues we heard in talking to the two staffs. And also suggesting that the process be initiated to relocate County Special Ed preschool, which is in a portable right near the, the Cesar Chavez classrooms, to another facility, and, and what that is, we don't know at this moment. But that would free up a classroom, it has a sink, that for an elementary program has a lot of potential and it's well-located relative to the rest of the Cesar Chavez facilities. And then suggestion that at a minimum quarterly meetings between either the principals or staff, whatever's appropriate, be instituted or reinstituted to address some issues with just two elementary programs on the same campus. So those are the recommendations for those two programs. Next, Galita Valley and Santa Barbara Charter. First of all, as I'm sure you recall, the I-98 bond had Santa Barbara Charter and Open Alternative as the two priority schools to find permanent homes and improve their facilities. And last August, the board gave direction that the charter schools shall be permanently located at Galita Valley. And once that decision was made, a lot of planning has occurred in the intervening time. The charter schools enrollment is pretty much stable. Galita Valley's is slowly declining. The recommendations for the shared campus to do some sort of storefront. Right now, there's an east parking lot and you have to walk quite a ways and it's really not very obvious where the charter school's located. And their office now, the trailers have moved out, they're in a classroom, but the two schools working together figure out how to get the office closer to the entrance and still have it be integrated into the charter school campus. And we're not saying exactly where that should be because there's lots of options and those need to be addressed. But we're giving direction or recommending that that be something that gets worked out in the near future. And then as space is available, if Galita Valley's enrollment continues to decline, a multipurpose room, which could be two adjoining classrooms, their own library, and the last one is, is probably a biggie. There are about 75 home-based students that are now housed. When they're there, at a church on Cathedral Oaks, probably about a mile and a half, two miles away. 75 students, approximately. It varies year to year, but it's usually right around there. Returning that program to campus, and that requires additional facilities. Rent is being paid, so there's a definite trade-off there. La Cuesta, this is the facility at Santa Barbara High. The board direction was to reduce the number of La Cuesta sites from the current four, which was, or is, the three high schools and at La Colina. Also, as part of that discussion and subsequent discussions in front of the board, talked about retaining at a minimum one program in Galita. A lot of these students don't have access to vehicles. Some of them are ninth and 10th graders. They can't drive. And another consideration is four classrooms right now are used by La Cuesta at La Colina. And that is one of the more crowded sites. There's close to 1,000 junior high students and I think it's around 240, 250 Open Alternative students. And, and that's a lot where an additional four classrooms are used by La Cuesta students. The recommendations relating to La Cuesta, and is Kathy here? Kathy's here. She can help me answer questions if you have some, is relocate the two Los Alturas. Those are the high school students. Classrooms to Ortega Street, right next door, now that the decision's been made to move the academy over to Lacumbra. Or another appropriate site, but, or this site appears to be the best. Consider moving the other two classrooms at La Colina. That's community day school. Wherever it may be appropriate, if that's here, you know, give that careful consideration. Those are junior high school age students and would want to be separate from any high school students. Relocate some of the students at this campus to Ortega Street here. And if space allows, relocate some other Galita-based students. The more and more we talked about this, it became clear that retaining one, if not two, programs at the high schools out in Galita really made a lot of sense in terms of serving the students and their needs. And there are some funding benefits from doing that as well. La Colina, OAS, and La Cuesta, the four classrooms. OAS, as I mentioned earlier, was a priority under the I-98 bond. Last August, you confirmed that, that the school should be located at La Colina on a permanent basis. La Colina's enrollment is the highest of the junior highs. And OAS is, has increased. The 218 was last year, 237 estimated this year. Their program is designed for about 250. I mean, that's the way they plan everything. So it would not be expected to ever go above that. The recommendations are, as I mentioned, under La Cuesta, relocate one or two of the programs, in other words, two or four classrooms worth of students, which frees up that area for OAS and La Colina use. And they have, those two programs, they have a very good working relationship and have managed to deal with issues like this really well. OAS has a long laundry list of things now that they have a permanent home. The health department wants them to have a covered lunch serving and eating area. That's one of the hallmarks of their program. That's very important to them. Office, et cetera, et cetera. They too want some sort of storefront. We're looking at the very western part. There's a turnaround for maybe short-term parking and drop-off. Give them some identity and separate the elementary students from the secondary students.
I have
Sure.
A question right here.
Okay.
In, if you look in the needs assessment part of the, the appendices, the portables that Los Alturas was using look pretty deplorable. And so I, I guess I'm tossing it out there, you know, if that space was turned over to OAS, would we have to be removing these and installing new portables? Would that have to be a consideration?
Those are some of our older portables. There's still some useful life there. We do have some portables. Believe it or not, they're in worse condition than those. Specifically, three at Santa Barbara Junior High between childcare and the library.
And I, I think that OAS was actually considering using that space to expand their garden. But
I've, I've not heard taking over the space where those portables were for a garden. I have heard expanding the garden area that they have into a larger area for some, for some, some unused area around what is called the Laugh House and, and over further to the west. Some of the area there is unused.
Two things here just to note, long, long, long term. They would like consideration someday down the road, and this all depends on enrollment and lots of other things. But they would like to have a home-based program. There is interest in that. And they would like to provide a preschool, as pretty much all other elementary programs do. There just isn't space right now, but that may change over time. Lacumbra and, and Santa Barbara Community Academy. The direction back in August, a year ago, was to, I can't remember the verb, whether it was research. I think it was explore, moving the K through 3 of the academy over to Lacumbra to join the 4th through 6 that were there for a two-year period. And lots of discussion, as you well know, over the last year on that. And finally, at the end of July, just over a month ago, the board directed that the third, approve the move of the 3rd through 6 of the academy as of July 30th. So the 3rd joining the 4th through 6 over there on a permanent basis. And move the kindergarten through second graders when the parking lot is improved because traffic and parking, one of the issues that were of great concern during this discussion. The academy's enrollment has been stable for a couple of years at around 300. Some of that undoubtedly due to the, the question about where was their permanent home going to be. Lacumbra has been increasing for La Cumbra has been increasing for about the last three years. Last year, 479, projected to be 540 this year. And then the recommendations, this is off their website, as I said, delay the start of the school year to July 30th. It was around the 9th or 10th. It feeds right into the whole calendar question. Moving the third grade over for that and the second grade, K through two, within a few months. And then these are the new goals that we've included in the administrative final and based on some discussion before the board. The classroom allocation, giving some idea of, a sense of priority. Obviously, grade level instruction, libraries, computers. Elementaries treat computers differently. Some have computer labs, some prefer computers in the library, some have them in the classrooms or combinations thereof. So we've given some guidance as to computers and let the site and the district staff work out what's the best way to do that. Special ed, obviously, child development or preschool programs where they have them. And then two additional classrooms that the principal would have discretion, and this depends on their student and parent body. Newcomers or pull-out programs for reading or whatever serves their population best. And then if there are additional classrooms, we've suggested that the use of those be something that's worked out with those on the site as well as district staff, because if they're portables, for example, there might be somewhere else where that portable would be put to better use. School closure issues, we've talked about these before. These would be the kinds of things a school, I guess it's the real property district advisory committee would look at, not exclusively, but just giving some guidance. And then in terms of the calendars, there are two, no, three? Help me here. Four, four calendars? Okay, four. The biggest challenge, I think, being those programs that are year-round and they have tended to start in July, whereas the other more traditional calendars start in late August before Labor Day. And from Mr. Hetjank's perspective, having those school years be so staggered is really a challenge. And if we could move in the direction of having them start pretty close to each other, it would really make things easier, not to mention from a staffing perspective. If, if staff needs to be moved around, it just really makes a lot of sense. It's not something that can be done immediately, but it's, it's a goal to work toward. And then finally, tonight, we're looking for any further direction from the board and ideally asking that you direct, that the final plan come back with any additional pieces of information, making sure the math works. We have to finish updating the school posters. Some of the appendices still need a little work, but it would be great, from my perspective, if, could be continued to a specific meeting. If you're not comfortable with that, that's fine, too. So we'd be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Questions or comments? Yeah, Ms. Parker?
I have a couple pretty specific ones. One is table nine, where it shows, oh yes, we need a light.
In the appendices?
No. Table nine, page 24.
Oh, got it.
Yeah. Where it's showing the schools without attendance boundaries. And I'm wondering why the two Santa Barbara Charter, why is Santa Barbara Charter not on that list?
We asked the same question a year ago when this was in here. This was the information we were given. That's not to say the question was asked correctly. That might have been it. But we're going to update this data and have all the charters. And we wanted to make sure it's right, so we just left it alone.
Right.
And we'll fix it in the final.
I, I actually think an interesting thing to have for all of our charters is maybe a separate table, is beyond the transfers in, just to really clarify, the number of in-district students that are attending the school and the number of out-of-district students that are attending the school.
Okay, because this will, once we fix it, it'll tell you in, but-
It'll tell you in, but it doesn't give the overall number and you, you need to sort of extrapolate, but it would be nice to have that number. The other specific thing for me is table 13 on page 29 and 30. And as I was looking through the elementary school classroom use, just the things that I know are, if you look at Adams and the other category is what I was looking at. If you look at Adams, I know Adams has an art room that's not listed. Cleveland has two Waterford computer labs that aren't listed. Monroe does have a computer lab that's not listed. Washington has a computer lab that's not listed. And so I'm just wondering if maybe this could be taken to the principals-
Yeah.
-as a, for an update.
It was taken to the principals several months ago, but it is a snapshot in time, but we will update it.
Great.
That's fine.
And the last thing is more general. It's a little bit of a concern about the future goals. When you were looking at that elementary facilities list that you had up just a moment ago, there.
Yeah.
The plus two additional classrooms designated at principal's discretion. I'm just, I'm a little concerned about that in terms of equity issues for students across our elementary districts, because the populations can be so different, that if you say, okay, well, you have a certain population and the principal's decided that you're going to have a science lab and an art classroom, but you, with a different population, you have to have a newcomers program, and so your kids can't have a science lab because you're going to have newcomers in art. And I'm, I'm a little concerned about that fixed-in-stone, two additional classrooms designated at principal's discretion. And I don't know if the principals have been discussing this, but it seems like it needs to be something that's a little bit more flexible.
I'm sure they would say that. As you recall, as part of our budget cuts, we had talked about mothballing unused classrooms. And currently, if there are classrooms that are, are not being used as classrooms and the site has control of those rooms, they might put music in one, might put art in another, might put newcomers in another, might put a parent group in another, might, I mean, just all sorts of things. And that becomes an equity issue as well, and it's simply based on the numbers of students at the school. I agree with you. The program issues are important, and that's why we had talked about having child development programs, special education, I suppose. If we have specialized needs for English learners or categorical needs, we could certainly include that in the list. But we wanted to equate on some basis those additional classrooms that are being used in various ways by various schools. And we wanted to be true to those budget cuts and being able to mothball those classrooms that really aren't being used, but of course, you can always leave them open and they'll get filled somehow.
Dr. Sarvas, I think it's also an appropriate time to, the board may want to discuss as far as the extra portables that when, we're hoping this year to look at utilizations and then identify sites that have above those two portables for future use of those portables, because we have three things that are happening that we can either relocate additional portables or we're going to have to purchase some portables. And I don't think we should be purchasing portables with declining enrollment when we have excess portables. Those three things specifically are that when we reconfigure the portables at Washington Elementary for ADA compliance, three of those portables will not make the move. They're too old, they'll have to be demolished, and we'll have to, we want to find three portables from existing campuses. Also, at Peabody Charter, right now, we are renting two portables from the county. We've notified the county that we won't need them next year. We plan on finding two portables to replace that, so we don't have to pay $8,000 a year to the county in rent for those portable classrooms. The third place is Cesar Chavez, where we're still leasing some portables with developer fees that we can send back to the leasing and use our existing portables, so we don't have to rent there. And so our goal is to reduce our renting of portables or our having to purchase portables from excess portables in inventory, just because of our financial situation.
Can developer fees cover purchase of portables and, I mean, I don't know what's available.
They, they could cover purchase of portables and leasing of portables, but, you know, once we, once we finish our bond projects with I-98 and we look at the, the monies available that are left, and we look at priorities, and we look at what's left in bond and developer fees, bring that to the board, then, then we want to have maximum dollars there for the board to make appropriate decisions on, you know, is there enough to do in Adams Library? Do we want to go further down that existing priority list and replace some older portables with new portables? That's also on that priority list for I-98. So, so we, we would come back to the board for, for direction on priorities.
Okay.
But I'm just trying to reduce the, the need to, right now, purchase any portables and, and reduce our lease payments going out of the district, no matter what funds they're coming from.
Thank you. I, I, both issues that need to be balanced, you know, equity issues, how, how classrooms are used versus the expense of making every unused classroom on a campus available. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Malkov?
I, I mean, I see definitely that we need to finish the master plan here and, and actually get it out. On the other hand, there's ongoing issues that are never, I mean, this isn't the end, certainly.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure is this, are we going to continue on, along these lines of figuring out what to do with, for example, the, the Ortega Street? I mean, is there actually the issue of, of what to do in terms of the M and O, what to do with this facility? I mean, there's many more questions. This, I mean, I feel like we, we made a giant step, but we still have lots of things in the back to keep going on. What do you propose for that?
Maybe Dr. Sarvas.
To remain a consultant, add an item? Okay. That isn't, so looking ahead is not actually as part of this at this moment.
We, we did talk, correct me if I'm wrong here, about like discussing M and O and, you know, this is zoned commercial and it's very valuable, real estate, and who knows if a downtown school site, all those issues. And we decided that is so complicated, it's way beyond the scope of what we're doing here. And I totally agree, and I think anyone who's worked with us on this is, this is, it will be more or less a snapshot, and we're trying not to tie future hands. When we worked with the school programs, we, we tried to deter them from saying, okay, I want a six-foot wall right here. Like, no, 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 don't do that. Keep it flexible and give direction. I do think it would be a better plan if we fleshed out the Ortega site, for example, and La Cuesta, because La Cuesta is all over the district and it does have a bearing on lots of school sites. So that is something we're hoping to get some insight from the board. And as I said, Kathy Abney's here and she can help answer any questions you might have. But we have put a lot of work in this. We do need some closure, and then other issues will come along, and whether they're appended to this or they stand alone, we'll, we'll see, whatever works best.
So on, I mean, as the, on the agenda tonight is not really deciding what to do with La Cuesta. That isn't what we're here for tonight. Is that correct?
I think we were hoping to get some direction from the board, whether the idea of, for example, the two Los Alturas classrooms from La Colina coming over here. There's been discussion of Community Day, which is the junior high age students. Like to get some feedback from the board. If you're not ready to do that, that's fine.
I think I'd like to hear from-
Sure.
-the principal, but this is not my meeting.
No, no, no. We are, we are coming up on 9:40, which was the conclusion of this, with the addition of, of extra time added to it. And I don't think that, I don't know that anybody's ready to give any clear direction this evening, is-
No, I'd need like a whole report on the pluses and minuses of moving Los Alturas and Community Day.
I'm wondering if we should bring back those two specific discussions. La Cuesta-
Yes, and that should certainly be agendized as a separate item-
Correct.
-public can know that it's going on.
Absolutely. So I'm having a little stroke here. La Cuesta and what was the other school?
Los Alturas.
Thank you.
Los Alturas.
And Community Academy.
Community Day.
No, Community Day.
Day school, thank you. It's all, it all involves La Colina. I can, I can grab that one. So I think a future agenda item with regard to those very specific items. Dr. Noel?
Yes. One thing that I find missing is a, a goal to optimize the use of space among, across elementary schools, where, where the school boundaries, the attendance areas are variable. Just, I mean, it's just, it's a no-brainer. It's also, by no politically, very sensitive, but it's, but a facilities master plan that does not address the possibility of changing attendance areas to consolidate, to, to make more effective use of campuses and free upspace at campuses toward the possibility of, at least scenarios for the possibility of closing a school. I think that's, just doesn't make sense. A facilities master plan in a period, in a time of declining enrollments, it would seem to me has to address that.
We can bring some language back and talk about that.
Can I ask a question of clarification? I mean, I'm certainly open to having that discussion. Do we want to have it in connection with the school closure discussion or potential? Or do we just want to have a separate discussion under the heading of the facilities master plan?
I would like to hear a presentation with some expertise on the use of the optimizing software that we either had or have or that's available.
Okay. Okay.
It gets a little complicated in that we have open enrollment and people go-
These are policy issues, and that's all part of what goes into a plan. Here, here are options available for policymakers that accomplish certain things, have certain costs associated with them.
But since parents can go to whatever school they want, given our transfer policy, it makes the boundary decision almost, it almost doesn't matter in some ways.
Well, it matters when, it matters when schools are full. It matters for those that are real full, you know. It matters for Peabody.
Which is not, which does not have a boundary that we can change, so.
It's the only one where we can't change it.
But maybe, but isn't that a policy issue, though? Do we, do we want to continue to have this kind of open thing? Is that the best way to make use of, of space?
It's required by ECO.
I don't think we have a choice by law, but, but I do take the point that most people, if they're assigned a neighborhood school, attend that school invariably. So I, I do think that that is at the foundation, even though we are obliged to offer choice.
In my, in my many years now on, on the board, I recall only one boundary change.
Between Franklin, Cleveland and Roosevelt, yeah.
Yep, and way up in the boonies.
Yeah.
I think it's because the law changed and it's become, and we're, we're so much more flexible than we used to.
No, the law was in place before. Yeah, it was.
It was a political, a political question. There were people who wanted a change.
Madam President-
I think it's worth looking at least at some general scenarios.
Just to put things in a little perspective, page 23, table seven at the bottom, is transfers, elementary transfers within the district and out of 57, 100 and change, 192 this last year transferred outside their, their specific, you know, neighborhood school. That doesn't count the kids going to the schools that don't have boundaries. That's just neighborhood school, the neighborhood school. But there's, there's a lot of data and, and then there is software to understand.
And maybe, you know, maybe upon, upon, final review, you decide that everything's fine as it is.
Mm-hmm. So that was three specific pieces? I just want to make sure. Yes?
No.
Okay. You caught that. No, I don't think there's any public comment on this item. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it. Yes.
Sorry, that, that confused me in that table that you, that we were just looking at.
Table seven.
Ms. Daly, yes, table seven. And I'm wondering, in Franklin, it says that there are two students who transferred to Franklin from Franklin.
Hmm. They walked around the block. We'll check that. That is interesting. If you find anything else like that, please let me know.
Absolutely.
There's a lot of numbers in here and we tried very hard to get them right, but.
It's a pretty exhaustive report, and I would say you did well with just the, the few errors that, that- It's a pretty exhaustive report and I would say you did well with just the, the few errors that, that people caught.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Daley.
Thank you.
Thank you to your team.
Janice and Joe.
Okay. Okay. Lane Wheeler.
I'll be real brief. Before there any consolidation of La Cuesta or the Community Day School, I would highly encourage the board to consider accessing the resources we have. They're in the form of teachers who are working with those students on a daily basis and probably have great expert, expertise in what those kids might do if they're put together in one site as opposed to being located closer to neighborhood or, or original school site. I just think it's an important resource that we have possibly not examined. And I would encourage you to keep that in the arsenal of tools that we have to best serve those students and provide the best educational background and provisions that we can give those guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we are on to item F three, Report on School Finance and Management Conference, School District Services of California, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight.
Ed Diaz, our Assistant Superintendent for Business Services, recently attended the School Services of California Conference on these important issues. And there was enough vital information that both Ed and I felt that that needed to be presented to the board tonight. Ed?
Yes, also Shirley, Patty, a couple of other staff, we went together down to Anaheim. And the board will be receiving the complete book. I ordered extra books. And as they come in, the cabinet superintendents, assistant superintendents, I would expect they'll be in this week or next. You'll get the full book. And there's several hundred pages in there. The two things that really jumped off the page at me were, of course, the discussion about the calculation of the reserves. And I've act, I've put here item one, two, three, and four. And just for clarification, item one is verbatim language from the presentation. And they, it speaks to the calculation of reserves, the average statewide reserve. People, you can read that, that should be higher if you're declining enrollment, should be lower if your ADA doesn't change much. There, you can read through that. The thing that caught me though, was, was when I asked pointed questions to two of the school services staff. And the first question I asked, as we were walking in the door, was, how are the state revenues coming in to the treasury in, in Sacramento? And to somebody who knows, who works in the, in that department. And they said, the July revenues were one point two billion below their projections. So that was the first month they were available and they're one point two billion below. August data wasn't available. Their next available update will be the Legislative Analyst Office in November, which will try to keep you. Those are more important numbers because if their whole financial structure is built on these overly optimistic projections and they're already proving to be too optimistic, then that's going to somehow trickle down and get, get to us at some point during the year. The second thing that I thought was unusual is when I asked the question, does the current revenue projection, or, or did the current revenue projection for oh seven oh eight include any of the impact of a subprime, subprime mortgage crisis? Would, did they calculate any fallout from that in terms of lower revenues, lower taxes? And they go, no, that wasn't, nobody, that wasn't an issue when we put this budget together. So I thought, okay. And then the question I asked after that was, will the oh eight oh nine budget that presents to us in January, will it include information from the December property tax questions? And again, the answer was no. So I just thought those were three kind of heads-up things in terms of important financial information that's not going to include some potentially very, very altering data for us. So then the other item is just I attached the school, just the school board, excuse me, the School Services of California DART Board is on the page. Dave, do you have a way to put that up just to? I just wanted to walk. I guess the thing that, that puzzled me somewhat, again, if, if these items for, I'm just, I'm just using their state statutory COLA. If these numbers are based on optimistic revenues that are already proving to be lower than anticipated, then those are going to carry forward into the next couple of years. What really is an item of concern is in oh eight oh nine, they're projecting a COLA based on the information they have at this time of four point three. The next year, oh nine, ten, it drops down to two point five. That's almost a forty percent drop in one year. So I'm saying that there could be a chain reaction, if you will. If the revenues come in light this year, that's going to take that all the way out. So just keep an eye on that. I, I brought it to you not so much out of alarm, but as a, again, as a heads-up because you'll be making many decisions with regards to district finances here. And I just thought those things were noteworthy to provide you this evening.
Excuse me, Ed, you may want to highlight the state average reserve for other school districts in California as well.
The, yes, that was from.
It's in item number one.
Yeah, David's getting it. He's getting it. Yeah, that's fine. Again, the item number, item number one is a verbatim from their presentation. I just took it right off of one of their slides. And the statewide, the average reserve for other school districts is about ten percent. And that includes Dr. Sarvis though, the three percent of, for your economic uncertainties. But it shows you that there's a free reserve above the three of about seven percent throughout the state as, as an average. And then it gives you the, this various reasons why you would need a higher reserve if, if any of these items took place in your district, declining enrollment, deficit spending, audit legal, basic aid, fast growth. And then you'd have lower, if you had ending balance, very consistent, consistent labor settlements, et cetera. So this was from school services and then the items, Dave moved that up now. Then the items that we just briefly touched on were the optimistic assumptions about the, the subprime mortgage crisis on the state economy not being included in any of their estimates. And I know that there's already some twelve thousand jobs in California have been lost and more announced almost every day in that field. So all that is going to trickle down into our state coffers. So just something to keep, keep an eye on.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Comment I'd like to make. I find it remarkable that, that we're talking about a possible ten percent reserve. The first time we've ever seriously talked about a number that high in my memory. And at a time when we, when we have a, a debate that is sometimes cropping up, sometimes not surfacing, about what to do with a big surplus. And, and I just hope that this doesn't mean that, that we're trying to build a case here for, for not using that money for other purposes, but holding a whopping reserve. When I came on, on the board, Dr. Caston talked about the ideal of having five percent. I have never heard of anyone aspiring to ten percent for this district. I am so dismayed by that number that I think of a statewide average at ten percent. I'm, I, I know school service is a very authoritative source and I'm not, I'm not challenging it, but I just, I find that really a remarkably high number. That means somebody must be way above ten percent because there are a hell of a lot of them who are a lot closer to three percent and just barely making it. So I, I just, I, I suspect, I suspect something here. I have to say that. Thank you.
Other comments? Yeah, Ms. Parker.
Yeah, it's just along that, I can see where, if you're, if you're putting their slides sort of verbatim on this sheet where it says the statewide average for other school districts is about ten percent. And then reasons why you should have it higher listed. But I'd really be curious to see school districts that are in declining enrollment in particular, are they the ones that are anywhere near ten percent? Maybe they should be at ten percent, but it'd be hard to believe that they would be anywhere near that. Basic aid, obviously, and other issues, I can see why it would be there and where they may be able to be there. But it seems unlikely for districts in declining enrollment. One question I had is the oh eight oh nine COLA projection. You have it here on this page, it's four point five percent. On the DART board, the next page, it's four point three percent. And then the oh nine, ten, it's two point five percent. Districts across the state have been building their multi-year projections on a COLA for oh eight oh nine of about three point seven percent. And this district is the same. Our multi-year projection was a COLA of three point seven percent for oh eight oh nine and two point six percent for oh nine, ten. So are districts across the state now going to be updating their multi-year projections with the new COLA? And if this district, is this district going to be doing that as well?
Ms. Parker, this is considered, this DART board is considered the industry standard for these things in California. So yes, districts will be updating and adjusting their numbers according to this document.
So my question is, will we get, will that be done for the September fifteenth numbers? So the, the numbers that we get when we address this on September twenty-fifth, will that include?
Those are going to be oh six, oh seven, closing numbers.
Closing numbers, but we'll see multi-year projections probably as part of that.
You'll see multi-year projections, but you'll see the impacts of these at your first interim report.
So it will include that for the multi-year projection aspect of it? Okay.
And again, these are School Services of California numbers. These were not anything, these are just copied directly from that.
Thank you. I, I believe we have a speaker on the side. Michael's ready. No, okay. And then I think we are on to F four. Another related item, a report on the oh six, oh seven fund transfers.
F four is normally the kind of item we'd put in the board brief. Last, at our last meeting, Shirley Corpus had told you about the transfers and she said what those numbers were during the meeting, but you did not see them in writing. And so that nobody suspects anything, I want you to see them in writing. So it's a very straightforward item. Shirley?
Good evening, everyone. During the year-end closing process, it was determined that due to deficit spending during the oh six, oh seven fiscal year, the funds listed below are required contributions from the general fund. And because these transfers were not included in the estimated actuals, which was presented to you on June twenty-ninth, Mr. Diaz has reported this during the August twenty-eighth board meeting. And in line with our effort to bring you timely and accurate financial information, we have given you, I am now giving you the details of this one million, one hundred fifty thousand dollar transfer. Details of this funds, of how these funds perform will be included in the presentation of the unaudited actuals. However, if you have specific questions, I will try my best to answer them. These funds are special funds that we have set aside. Fund sixty-seven is property and liability funds. It's a self-insured fund. Fund sixty-eight is workers' compensation. Fund sixty-nine is dental vision. That's also a self-insured fund. And fund seventy-one is retiree benefits. Because the expenses exceeded the revenue during oh six, oh seven, these are, these amounts are required to make the fund positive, to give the fund positive ending balances. So for property and liability in the elementary district, a contribution of twenty-five thousand dollars was transferred. For a high school district, one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. For workers' compensation, which is all, it's in the high school district, it's six hundred fifty thousand. For dental and vision, one hundred thousand dollars. And for retiree benefits, two hundred fifty thousand dollars in a total of one thousand, one, one million, one hundred fifty thousand dollars. As authorized by, by the resolution oh six, oh seven forty-one for elementary and oh six, oh seven forty-two, these transfers have already been made. And this is just information to the board.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, how is the retiree benefits here different from GASB that we've heard of before?
Are retiree benefits, oh, they, oh P E B, yeah.
Right, it's about, it's about posting.
That's the GASB forty-five that you're referring to? That has, we are, the GASB forty-five requires us to recognize our liability, our future liabilities for the gas, for the retirees. We are on a pay-as-you-go basis right now. So this is the result of not having contributed enough during the year to, as compared to the premiums or the claims that we have paid.
So if, I'm not sure. So there's, there's separate things.
Yes, Dr. Malikoff, the GASB forty-five, Government Accounting Standard forty-five, dictates that school districts must recognize the cost of their future retiree benefits. Currently, this district is, has a liability in the neighborhood of eighteen million. But as prescribed by law, the actuarial study must be updated every two years. I just recently made contact with the firm that did our last one and there will be another actuarial study done in October. Since our last one was done in oh five, we'll do one in October oh seven. And then that will give us the most current information on the cost of these future benefits. We will have to recognize them not as a liability on our balance sheet yet, but we'll have to make a notation in the financial statements that they are, that it does exist. And in the event of looking for more funding, bond funding, public debt finance, it could have an impact on our credit rating, depending on how much we have set aside for that.
So this fund is current.
This is current expenses.
And GASB is for future.
Yes.
So the fact that we, we took some out to start to fund our future, didn't we take some, didn't we put some aside for GASB?
We originally presented on June twenty-ninth that that was the case, but the, the direction I received was that, that we should, that should be a topic for a different discussion.
When do we have to do that? This has been cooking for a long time. And I thought we were obliged to comply with the GASB standard effective this year at least.
Many districts, depending on their financial circumstances, have begun to fund large portions of their liability and, and actually recognize it. We're, as many districts are, our district is, is, I don't want to say we're, we're doing the minimum as required by law at this point to meet the law.
Could you give us a reference on that law?
I'll, not right off the top of my head, but I'll be happy to provide one for you. I can give you more information on the GASB forty-five.
We're required to report it as a liability for oh seven oh eight, but we are never required at this point to actually fund it.
Yeah.
To fund.
But.
At some point that'll come.
It'll come back to bite you.
Come down.
So the nine hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars that, that you had set aside in, in the budget.
That was our first.
What happened to that? That's in the budget that we approved, isn't it?
No, that was, that was just, it, it became part of, when he took like the label of it being designated for GASB forty-five, when he took that label off, it was just part of.
Undesignated.
Undesignated reserve. Undesignated reserves.
Undesignated.
And it wouldn't really have meant anything unless and until we started some sort of irrevocable trust, because that's what has to happen.
Yes.
Exactly.
Well, are we going, I mean, I, my recollection is that we, that we acknowledged that we had to do this a couple of years ago, and that, and I'm wondering why we haven't done it, because it seems the presentation we had suggests that we proceed at our peril if we don't start to put away the money for real into an irrevocable trust. And that we're deluding ourselves, if that, that we have more money than we really do if we don't do that, because it's, it's a risk issue. It's an actuarial issue, but it's very real nonetheless.
Right.
We have this scheduled for board discussion in October, since that's at about the date when we expect to give the report on our liability. We must report on the liability. So, we put it on the list.
And at some point, you're exactly correct, Dr. Noel, the district would be prudent to start setting money aside for this future obligation. To the extent that we can do that, though, will be dictated by the condition of our finances.
I think there's a typo here. It's not Fund 31, it's Fund 71.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's supposed to be Fund 71.
Well, perhaps you could explain the workers' compensation funds, Fund 68.
Okay. The workers' compensation fund, we are a member of SISC, the School Self-Injured Schools of California. And that's a joint power authority where we are a member, and we pay the premium to them. And so for, maybe I should, and so for the fiscal year '06-'07, we did not, and in the prior years, we were not recognizing open claims. We were supposed to set up reserve for open claims and also the IBNR, the incurred but not recorded claims. And with the, when the, Jim Bolzano, the consultant from VTD and I analyzed the account, it was actually understated, we're supposed to set up a reserve for those open claims, because there are three items that are being paid from the workers' compensation. The actual claims that are paid during the year, reserve for open claims, and the IBNR. So, I'm, I'm just going to share a summary here, so that, I was planning to present this during the unaudited actuals, but since the board has asked about it, I might as well just show. That is the performance of the fund during the year. And the expenditures in Fund 68 showed 2.7, 2,751,000 during the year. The premiums that we have paid to our, to SISC, the Self-Injured Schools of California, was only 1,464. That's why we ended up with a unaudited actuals of 629,000. The premiums are based on the experience of the district and the paying, and of all the districts that are members of the JPA. And last year, we were accruing $1.63 per $100 of payroll. And this year, it's, it has gone down to $1.33 per $100 of payroll. And that, that is done through the payroll system.
I'm, I'm quite confused. I thought that by joining this
JPA.
Self-insurance fund, our joint, joint powers authority, what's it called, SSC?
SISC, which is Self-Injured Schools of California.
And how many schools are in that?
I don't know exactly how many there are.
But it's a lot, right?
There's a lot. There's more than 10.
And I thought, and then they then go out and buy the insurance.
Right.
So, but we are effectively buying insurance through them.
Through them.
Okay. I thought the whole idea of pooling risk in that way was that no matter what you pay, you pay your premium. And if you, if the claims exceed your premium, the insurance eats it, so to speak. And of course, if you, if they, if you're, if you're below, if your claims are less than your premium, they gain. And that on balance, their, their actuarial specialists have calculated this out, so that on balance, the fund stays solvent. So, so I, so I, then I, then I see, if I'm reading you correctly, that, no, we're actually going to have to pick up the difference for, between what we had, our claims and what our premium was. And that, to me, is very confusing.
That is just to set aside a reserve. Every year, they gave us numbers on, I mean, the amount of the open claims and the IBNR. And they, I mean, we have to set aside money in our books to make sure that our reserve is positive. See, right now, without that, we will end up with a negative balance of $629,000.
But what you're getting at is not that there was suddenly a huge jump in claims, but that it was being reported incorrectly.
Yes, right.
And so, that is the change, and that's why there's suddenly a larger number.
Right.
Okay.
What was reported incorrectly?
The, the reserve for open claims and the incurred but not recorded IBNR were not picked up in our books during the past years. But because.
How do we determine the size, the prudent size of the reserve for open claims?
They provide us the numbers. They send us a report telling us how much those are as they receive the claims. The open claims is really an accumulation of our claims since, you know, we have this workers' compensation.
Over what period of time is that?
They're in, they're still in the 90s. What we have is like 90.
So, this is an accumulation?
This is an accumulation.
From the 1990s?
Yeah.
And we've not, and we've not addressed that until now?
We are paying, we are paying the claims as they are, as they are incurred on a month, on an annual basis. So, our claims for this year, well, let me give you a more detailed breakdown. Here.
Dr. Noel, some of those claims took place in the 90s and early 2000. And the district is still on the hook, if you will, for those liabilities that we pay annually on those claims.
Why are these chickens all coming home to roost now at the tune of $650,000? Why haven't we, why haven't we been putting aside some money for this?
We have, we have not really been analyzing this special funds during the past two years that I was here.
Not been analyzing it?
Analyzing. We did not analyze, because they were, you know, they were positive balances during the past two years. No analysis has been made. They are, we're supposed to be maintaining, like for, for the workers' compensation fund, we're supposed to maintain at least $600,000 in our reserves every year.
And you missed the last meeting, Dr. Noel, where Ms. Corpus was talking about this verbally. But the outside analysts that the district hired to look at our accounts worked with you essentially and helped.
Look at all the funds.
Help look at all these numbers, and that's where these things came from.
I didn't miss it. I watched every word of it on television.
Yes.
So.
And, and, and my, and my puzzlement led me to call that agency, because Dr., Mr. Diaz gave me some of their correspondence. And they're the ones that explained it to me, that it's insurance. And I said, you mean that when we pay our premiums, if, if the claims exceed the premiums, that they're covered? And the answer was yes.
And we're covered, yes.
I said, you mean, we don't have to have a special reserve to back this? No, this is insurance. Now, I'm having a hard time reconciling that with these numbers. And, and I don't understand, the number's a little different on the letter from the consultant. I presume the $50,000 difference could be explained also.
Yeah, that, that, that was an estimate when he looked at it in the beginning. And so these are now the actual amounts that were booked.
And then, then I, then I go to look at the, I try to learn more about Fund 68, and I can't find Fund 68. It's not in the budget. It's not in the, the second interim report. There's nothing about Fund 68, except until I, until I read this letter and until I look at the television and read, and read this. There's no, so, so I, I have no way of, of seeing what's happening in terms of the activities. There's, there's no inter-fund transfer activity reported for Fund 68.
Because there was, yeah, nothing has been done.
It's a phantom fund in terms of the documentation that's available to me, and I presume therefore to the public.
No, Fund 68 is reported as a separate fund in the SACS reports that we have been giving you. It's just.
It is?
Maybe you could, in the board brief, give them the page number.
Oh, not, I mean, during the, the budget.
Well, I, I must admit, I just went by the budget document, and I went by the second interim report. And it is, and I can't find it in either of those, any reference to Fund 68.
I, I will, I will find it for you and send it to you. I, I know it is a separate fund, and it has.
And I would sure like to understand better why we have to keep a reserve when we're paying a very sizable amount as an insurance premium. And while, and then, and third, why, as I say, these chickens have come to roost at this particular point in time, rather than us having been dealing with this on a pay-as-you-go basis through the last several years. I, I don't, I think that needs an explanation. I think everybody needs to understand that.
But we have been dealing with it as a pay-as-you-go. The question is, but apparently we needed to have a, a reserve all these years, and we've just been mishandling it.
Is there recognition of, of the IBNR and the open claims that was not done? And it was not present, that's why.
Why didn't they have this item last year?
Because there was no.
It was not done correctly. There was no analysis.
Exactly.
That's what I'm saying. If it wasn't done correctly, I, as a board member, want to know why. And who's responsible?
Because.
This is serious business. This is $650,000 that really should go to restore programs that were cut inappropriately because we had the money.
Dr. Noel, the very key issue that we have in fiscal services is we don't have enough people, we don't have accountants to be doing analysis on a timely manner. And so, one, one of the reasons why we are very behind in providing you the unaudited actuals during the prior years is because after June 30, we spent at least three months just analyzing and correcting the errors that we're performing, you know, during the year. We do not have, we, we have a total of 25 funds, 11 in, in elementary and 14 in high school. Those are supposed to be looked at on a monthly basis. Because of the demand, and at the same time, we also have to take care of the budget monitoring process that our schools are demanding from us. We do not, I mean, bottom line is, we just don't have enough staff to be able to do the timely and accurate reporting. And I have already brought that to the attention of, of management, and we are working on that. Because if we continue to work on this lean group, I mean, staff at fiscal, we will continue to have the same issues.
But I, I, I think that the public has a right to know.
Yeah, yeah, we will.
Let me, let me make my point, because it's not about you, Ms. Corpus.
Yes, yes, Dr. Noel.
We have certainly heard from time to time in unsystematic ways that your office is understaffed. I believe that there was an additional staff added to it. And about three, four meetings ago, there was an item on the consent agenda for $20,000 for a consultant for, for the business office.
Right, right.
In addition, we're, I don't know what we're paying to Baron, to V.
VTD.
Okay.
That is the consultant.
VTD, yeah.
To those consultants. But, but I do not recall the superintendent coming to us and saying, we simply cannot give you accurate information without more help. And as a result of our not taking action on that, we have a mess. And I, and, and I think that is a very, very egregious oversight on the part of the administration. Dr. Sarvis, it was your responsibility.
Good, let me address it.
To tell us that you simply can't give us what we have to have.
Let me address it.
And, and rather than putting Mrs. Corpus up there on the hot seat, or Mr. Diaz on the hot seat, you should be there explaining this.
Let me address your concern.
Dr. Sarvis first, if I may, sir.
No, no, let me address this directly.
I've been making that, I've been making that statement since January or December, the second month I was here.
But I haven't seen it come forward as a serious proposal with the support of the superintendent saying, we have to have this help.
And that is the proposal we are developing right now. We have a meeting this week.
Well, it's a little late, Dr. Sarvis.
Well, we have a new budget manager, new director of fiscal services. I'm sorry, we do not have a new budget manager. That position is open right now. We do need more help. Grand jury identified that. School service, I'm, I'm sorry, not school services. FICMAT identified that. And we were never in a position to be able to hire in the additional help that we needed. We always stayed lean. We have stayed lean throughout the departments in the district office. We only have half the management staffing that other districts our size have. And that happens in every area. It happens in education services. It happens in categoricals. It happens in technology. And it, it has come home to bite us in budget, budget control, and budget analysis. And we are developing a plan right now. And frankly, it will be costly. But I want it to be well thought through to bring to the board, to add additional positions. And where we position those people is most important. And in fact, we'll be asking for outside analysis as well, specifically the county education office, specifically VTD, as to how we position people and how we efficiently operate a department like this.
Well, may I, may I ask you, Dr. Sarvis, why you're so reticent to bring in outside people who are in no way related to the district? VTD works for us. We pay them $70,000 a year as a, as a client for doing the audit. I think it's inappropriate that we should be asking their advice in this. Their audit didn't pick up these problems. Okay? That, okay, that, that's part of the problem. FICMAT is, has a reputation for dealing with these issues. FICMAT establishes standards that are adopted by the state for dealing with these issues. And yet, there's no interest in bringing in FICMAT. And I can tell you that based on what I am hearing from my constituents, that people are not going to believe what you tell them, because everybody who's doing the talking has something to be defensive about due to these horrendous errors.
Well, and I need to remind you.
And, and, and it ta, it will take an outside voice, someone who is truly independent of this district, to come in and tell us what, what happened, give us a thorough explanation, and help us figure out how to put it together. That will make it credible. And I don't think anything that you say, or Mr. Diaz says, or Ms. Corpus says, just as a matter of structure, I don't think that it will be taken as being credible.
I think that's what I just said. In fact, I need to remind you that FICMAT was here. FICMAT made a recommendation to hire an internal controller. And this is before I was superintendent. We didn't do anything with that.
That's right. But FICMAT also made a recommendation that we consider turning the whole thing over to the county. And we haven't done anything with that either.
And that's why I, that is.
We're in the process of, we've approved $8,000 for a consultant to investigate that.
And that's why, that is, would you let me finish, please? And that's just exactly why I just said that we would be bringing in the county, because the county is independent.
Well, may I ask you right now, can we bring in, can we bring in FICMAT? Not VTD, not the county office, but FICMAT?
Well.
The, the Physical Crisis Management Assistance Team.
Let's, let's do this. We're not really agendized for this discussion. Let me bring this back.
But it's just great to have the debate surface in public, Dr. Sarvis. It's really great. The public deserves this debate, at the risk of going beyond what we should be talking about.
Well, we do need to observe the Brown Act, Dr. Noel.
Well, my questions all relate to the funds, the management of funds, and getting a credible correction to what are now emerging as grievous errors and establishing a credible system for the management of funds.
And if you.
So that we aren't not confronted with the need to, to all of a sudden, transfer $650,000 into a. transfer $650,000 into a fund that has been neglected and not kept up to date.
And if you don't think I don't have those same concerns, you're dead wrong. And I have watched over this past year, as we have missed date after date, for unaudited actual ending balances, for the first interim report, the second interim report. And we almost, we almost missed the final date. And in retrospect, we should have, so that you had the documents in advance. And in fact, later tonight, I'm going to make a suggestion about our discussion on the unaudited actual ending balances. But I'll do that where it's appropriately agendized, under future agenda items.
Yes, Ms. Parker.
Because this discussion is going on, I just, I am, I would be curious in that to... Is FICMAT really just the be-all and end-all? Is it so much better than Reverend E. Trynand Day? Does it have a much better reputation?
Their function is, is a little bit different. And at this point, I'm not sure whether FICMAT would even be interested in coming to the district. They made recommendations five years ago. I imagine the recommendations are somewhat similar. It's that Dr. Noel has a particular preference for a gentleman who works for FICMAT. He feels that this person has a great deal of integrity. And I, I suspect that's why Dr. Noel wishes to turn in that direction.
It's the only institution I know of that knows us a little bit and that has no vested interest in the, in, in, in what it says.
I'm not sure why Reverend E. Trynand Day would have a vested interest if they're just...
Because we, because we are their client. $70,000 a year of income, we pay them.
As their auditor.
You don't think that their firm is all one firm and that they, that the guy who advised us on one thing doesn't know about the company?
But what difference does it make to...
We are, we are not agendized for this.
Way out of compliance.
My way out. I, I'm, I'm really concerned that people who are willing to file with the DA over Brown Act violations are suddenly not concerned about adhering to the Brown Act. I am really dismayed that we are taking, in the guise of doing something for the public, we are degenerating into a, into a, an argument, not a discussion, that is going so far beyond what we are agendized for and that is not a service to the public. That is not a, a discussion that's going to be fruitful for further enlightenment. It may provide, you know, nice little soundbites, but it's not getting us anywhere. And I'm not interested in sitting through this discussion tonight in the form that it's taking here. We have a process by which we agendize items to, to address at the board. And I would assume that we have a process by which we address them in a civil and cordial and professional manner. And I don't see that happening tonight, and I would like us to move on with our agenda.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Yes, well, I...
No, Dr. Noel, I didn't recognize you. I apologize. I really feel like we need to conclude this. Dr. Sarvis has a suggestion under future agenda items.
Well, I think I have a right to reply to my, to my colleague, Mrs. Cordero. Do I not?
Well, then, well, I have a right to reply to you.
This is, this could be endless.
Number one, my comments are about the agenda topic. They're about the management of these funds, okay? My, my point is that we will not have confidence in any report about the management of these funds without a truly objective outside analyst and report, okay?
You were on the board...
It's that simple.
You were on the board five years ago when FICMAT gave us a report. If we didn't do anything about it then, why are you going to do something about it now?
Now, now who's getting personal, okay? Now who's getting personal? I'm talking about issues, Mrs. Cordero. I know you don't like the way I talk, but I'm talking about issues and I have a right to talk about them and I'm on point.
As the chair, I'm going to conclude discussion of this item right now. We're getting nowhere. We're going to move on to item F5, should the board choose to move on with that item at 10:30 at night. And Dr. Sarvis has some suggestions under future agenda items.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. We have two public comments on...
Then let's have the public comments and we will conclude with the item on those public comments. Lane, Mike Serati and Lane Wheeler.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I think this, this is just another great example of how this district is completely failing in their job as fiduciary. The board has no concept of fiduciary responsibility. And I can't believe that Kate Parker, she must not listen to the news. You know, my old company, Arthur Andersen, probably the greatest accounting firm there, there was at the time, is no longer around because, you know, the accounting profession got to be where they would be consultants and auditors. And the thing got very vague and they got in big trouble. You can't, you're in this problem on this fund because of VTD. They have failed you. You ought to look at suing these guys for not picking these audit adjustments up in the prior years. So you're, you're, the guys that you, you thought were watching the shop weren't doing it. Your own staff isn't doing it, by her admission, that they don't look at these funds. There's no way I could have my job as controller at our oil company if I treated our books and our financial records the way you people do. It's unbelievable. And then, as your fiduciary responsibility, I'd like to have a good discussion of what, what is this resolutions regarding the delegation of your powers? I'm assuming, you know, from this wording, have you given up your power of, of oversight to the, to, to the staff? The people that are creating the terrible numbers? And then you expect them to authorize transfers? That's your job. That's why you guys were elected. And I think maybe there's, you know, we need to, you, four of you need to sit and think if you can do the job you were elected to do. Four of you up there constantly have shown that you cannot do it and have no willingness to do it, no willingness to force Dr. Sarvis to run a proper financial ship. Thank you.
We are on to item F5. Does the board wish to move on past 10:30 with this particular item? I actually would prefer not to. I apologize to Mr. Gonzalez for staying with us this late. I think there's important information here. I think 10:30 at night doesn't do it justice. Am I seeing head nods or am I seeing determination to move forward? Okay. Then we are on to item G. We will come back to item F5 on a future agenda. With gratitude to Mr. Gonzalez for hanging in here with us. Item D4 and D7 were pulled from the consent agenda. D4, I think, was Ms. Malikov?
That was me.
Okay, Dr.?
I simply wanted to register, I wanted the opportunity to vote, to vote no on that because it's, it looks to me like a new program in the arts going ahead of our action that we, that we are talking about taking on September 25th, where, where at least the possibility of restoring cut budgets will be an appropriate agenda item, I presume, to talk about. And I would like to see this, any such item folded into that conversation.
Okay.
Move to approve?
Um, I would, I'll second that, but I would like to have a little bit of a discussion about it.
Go ahead.
This is from site-based funds, isn't it?
Yes. That's the source that's identified at the bottom. It says...
The general fund.
Site, site ongoing art and music grant funds.
And the site funds come from where?
The site funds, well...
This, this is the state of California's ongoing art and music grant that was, that was initiated last year.
Oh, I misunderstood that entirely. Thank you, thank you.
Okay. So we have a second from Ms. Cordero, I mean, a motion from Ms. Cordero, a second from Ms. Parker. All those in favor of approving item D4 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now we'll move on to D7, approval of supplemental education services provider contracts.
I just wanted to ask, there's on page five of the first contract, it's different than the rest of them. And it's added in and I'm just curious as to why.
Yes, we did catch that and it turns out that they were simply notes written by the contractor to themselves. They are no way binding to us. I also would like to point out that A-plus, excuse me, that professional tutors did not end up submitting a contract. And so we would ask that their name be stricken. Other than that, we would recommend that you go ahead and approve these contracts.
Thank you. So a motion to approve would be needed for the contracts with the exception of A-plus, which is being excluded from consideration.
Motion to approve as amended?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Did we get the motion and the, yes, Cordero, Parker, I believe?
No.
No.
Thank you.
My second.
Okay, we like to keep those things straight. Coming events. Still a few more open houses to come, junior highs.
Few more open houses, yes.
Board correspondence. Board comments. Future agenda items. Dr. Sarvis?
I would like to address a future agenda item. On September 25th, we have a report scheduled on the year-end unaudited actuals. That report will be given on the 25th. I have two concerns. One is a concern about enough lead time on the documents and board study of those documents. The other concern is that our Director of Fiscal Services, Shirley Corpus, cannot be at the meeting on the 25th. I would like to suggest that we precede that presentation in that meeting with a board workshop or board presentation on these figures, on the unaudited actuals in advance of that meeting.
So what you're suggesting is, in essence, a conference agenda item on those numbers? And then on the 25th, we would have to be taking action on the closing of the books? Okay. Are we clear? So it would be a different date. So September 25th is our regular board meeting, but a meeting preceding that.
Okay, so we're suggesting a special meeting?
Yes.
Are we setting the date now or...
I think...
It could be Friday, the 21st. Actually, we'd like to back it up from that date. Shirley, could you weigh in on this?
I don't want to have a meeting without the documents.
May I, may I, may I object to any meeting on a Friday? The board, the budget was adopted. We were put in the position of having to adopt the budget on a Friday.
It'd be better, it'd be better not to have it on a Friday anyway. Because if, if there are any questions that are raised in the meeting, we want to give Shirley a couple of days to be able to answer those questions before we go into our board meeting the following Tuesday.
My question is, is it possible to do it on Tuesday, which is a regular board meeting time? Do it at 6:00 or 7:00 on a Tuesday evening?
If you do it on a Tuesday, you would like the documents to be given to you 72 hours before? Because we will be really needing this weekend to finalize the reports.
As a special meeting, it would be 24 hours before.
So we can give you the documents on Monday, because I will need this weekend to finalize the reports.
And it would just be a conference agenda item?
There would be no action being taken.
There would be no action.
And then you would have those documents all the way through to the 25th.
So in essence, we'd be getting the documents quite a bit earlier than we normally would.
Right, yeah, right. And so you can go through those documents and then you can ask all the questions that you want to ask regarding those documents and we will respond on... Maybe if you will ask on Tuesday, we will have to respond to you within 24 hours. So that if we have the conference on Tuesday, by Wednesday, I mean, we will, you know, we will have to respond to you in writing so that you... Rather than answering the questions during the conference, I would prefer to respond in writing within 24 hours, which you can have as your reference when you discuss it on the 25th, at the regular agenda. I mean, at regular board meeting, if, if that is, if the board is agreeable to that.
That certainly works for me. I don't know how the board members feel. I would, I think it's a benefit to see the information that much sooner in anticipation of the meeting on the 25th. Our board, I'm trying to think, what's seven from 25? The 18th, okay, thank you. So it would be September 18th. Does that work for board members? Yes? Okay. I'm assuming somewhere near our regular meeting time, 6:00 PM, or earlier or later?
Well, it's an open meeting then, or at what time?
Okay.
And... Correct, but it's a workshop, so it could be at 6:00. But I think the idea of it being on Tuesday evening after the close of the workday is what we're shooting for. 6:00 or 7:00, folks? Preference?
What are we having for dinner?
Yeah, there you go, okay.
And, and, Dr. Noel, I remember when we talked about financial reports a few years ago. You were asking about the, I mean, the rare question you asked was, "How is the money being spent?" And I did present to you a report that shows the, by function. So I would like to add that to my, to the report, so maybe it will be very helpful.
Great.
Yeah.
I, I have some other agenda items.
Oh, go ahead. So we've, 6:00 PM on September, Tuesday, September 18th? Okay, go ahead.
Since Shirley's appointment as the Director of Fiscal Services, we have been discussing a restructuring plan. And I'd like to put that on the future agenda as well. However, I do want, what I don't want, and maybe I need to explain what I was trying to explain earlier. I don't want simply Shirley to come forward, or Ed to come forward, or Brian to come forward and say, "Well, I think we need positions here or here." I think we need some independent verification of that as to how organizations are structured so that they operate efficiently. And I would be asking specifically for the County Education Office. I don't think we have time for FICMAT to come in. This needs to be done now. We need to move so that we get the positions identified and that we can get people in place. The last FICMAT study took well over a year.
I have a question regarding that. And that is, if we're waiting on a report from a consultant about whether or not we should be turning some of our functions over to the county, would that impact what our personnel structure looks like?
That would. And in fact, as part of that discussion, I would like to invite the county in to carry that discussion with the board as well. And that's, well, that was also in my mind. In that the county could then address the question of the county carrying some of those functions.
Okay, what's, what kind of timing are you looking at?
Well, I'm guessing that this is going to be a month away. Ed, you'll need to tell me, but that's my best guess right now.
Okay, so do you want to get back to us on that? Or do you want to set up some specific time now?
Speak to that, please, Dr. Sarvis. I'm meeting with some of the county folks tomorrow. In a special meeting to discuss just this very topic, what things could be moved? What, you know, what, what we could do in a best-case scenario? So they're not willing to make any commitments, they're just willing to sit down and talk to me. So to the extent that they are willing to make commitments to us, then I, we'd be able to report that to the board. And it would be, it would be within the timeframe the superintendent mentioned.
Well, I was trying to think whether this could be done, the first meeting in October or the second meeting in October. And my guess is that it would probably take until the second meeting in October. I mean, we're meeting tomorrow already to talk about restructuring plan. But we will need to go farther than simply our meeting. So I'm going to project the second meeting in October.
Okay. So we will look forward to that agenda item. And if the timing changes, I'm sure you will keep us informed. Any other future agenda items from board members?
As per Lane Wheeler's discussion this evening about the authorization, reauthorization of NCLB, whether it makes sense to have a resolution of some sort that we might agree on in that thing?
There are lots of sample resolutions out there. I'm sure that we could gather up a few and put it in a board brief. People can see what they, what they think.
I have one, one, one thing that came up this evening that I think might be worth putting on the agenda. And that was the question of having a real good hearing from the teachers at LaCuesta about the location of LaCuesta. And I think there needs to be a, some venue... there needs to be a, some venue where that can be hap, where the board can hear that and the public.
Um, okay. Uh, do we want to report from?
We'll, we'll project a, uh, timeline for that. And, uh.
That's something you'd have to arrange with Mrs. Abney.
You know, I already have for board discussion, uh, issues about LaCuesta Los Alturas Community Day School. And I would assume that we would all, would wrap all of that in together. And since that's likely to be a lengthy discussion, we may want to do it on an off meeting Tuesday so that, uh, teachers and the public could be here.
Hmm. Okay. Our plates are getting very full.
But could we make sure that we have some kind of outreach for the teachers? I didn't want to just leave it to, oh, hey, we found the agenda. Come if you can, but.
I understood that.
We really need to hear from them.
Good.
Okay. If there's nothing else, then this meeting's adjourned.